Okay, time being 7:05, I call the Halifax Plant and Board into session. Members present: Rick Mary, Amy Troop, and Gordon Andrews. On the agenda, we have bills from Amory Engineers, two separate bills. We have an appointment at 7:05 for Gary and Stacy Vallad. 63 Carver Street for site plan review. 7:30, we have continuation Josh Liddell for 285 Home Street Site Plan Review. 8 o'clock, we have a complaint discussion for Twin Lake Liquors, 657 Mont Ponce. On discussion, we have Walmart, 295 Plymouth Street. Letter from Sean dated 5/28, request for hours of operation change. Franklin Street solar array as-built sign. Pasture Lane status. Subdivision Control Regulations 235, Section 6C. Changes to A and R timeframes. Zero Mont Ponce Street map, 95 Lot 9. Minutes to approve, we have April 15, 2021. And we have correspondence from Sean at Walmart. Email from Cannabis Control Commission. Memo to the zoning enforcement officer. Email from Charlie Seelig regarding zoning bylaw review. Email from Nicole, complaint regarding Twin Lakes Liquors, 657 Mont Ponce. We have email from Jamie Discusso regarding Twin Lakes Liquor. Notice and letters from Abudding Towns. Notice and memos and letters from Halifax Boards and Committees. Other business, we have ZBA, comprehensive permit for the Country Club Estates. 40B project continued to July 21, 2021 at 7:00 p.m. via Zoom. And any unscheduled business to come before us. Next meeting is July 1. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda as read?
I'll make a motion to accept the agenda as read.
Sir, second?
I'll second it.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Seeing as we're already at... Hey Brendan.
Hey. Sorry about that.
Sorry. Brendan just joined us at 7:10.
Yeah, I'm new excuses. Already getting old.
So do we have Gary and Stacy Vallad present?
Sure.
Go ahead if you want to.
Baby, when you should look through the building, the commercial part. 63 Carver Street. Originally, the house that we thought was here now.
The house isn't an issue.
No, that's all right. That's okay.
We're going to move into the houses. You're going to be interested in the garage itself, the pole barn.
Okay. And the use is going to be?
Excuse me?
The use?
To store our equipment. Hands taken three way. Do you have any comments from the other boards? I haven't seen them here. I didn't see them in our emails today. Oh, wait a minute. Sorry, I see it. Yeah, I see it now. I'm sorry. Three questions, but why don't you have two?
One is revised because the fire chief wanted additional stuff put in. So we had it revised and I dropped it off yesterday.
So why don't you have yesterday the...
Yesterday or the day before for...
For 12:21.
Yeah.
Oh.
You want to say the subdivision, gas and potential in around this area?
Okay. The whole property or which area?
Just the area, I believe.
The back and side.
The bus stop, police station, and the bus there and mobile power company.
But it also states on the new one, the height and width of the log piles. And it shows that the wood chip bin, just small things that the fire chief wanted put in.
What's the... Is the proposed erosion control measures just like the hay fence? Okay, so I believe that will be the fence right here then.
So do you know what the revisions were?
The revisions were the fence going along the back corner of the... Where the log piles were. The revisions also where the height and width of the log piles, height, width, and length of the log piles were noted on here. And that there was a wood chip bin. It just... That just needed to be labeled.
Were those not on the other plans?
They just... They weren't labeled. It just said concrete bin.
Because I'm just trying to figure out if we have the latest plan. That's all.
You should have. I brought them in.
We have the fence and the... Devoted.
Yep.
Yeah, this morning.
All right, now I see it.
Okay.
Okay.
Got it. So Gary says that it was a pole barn?
Correct.
How many employees do you have? Just you two and...
I'm one part-time and one full-time.
So the two of us, one part-time and one full-time.
I see.
Majority of work we do is between this time and this.
So you're not proposing to do any asphalt work?
No, it's going to be the reprocessed.
What are you planning on doing with the existing house? Just keeping it and this is just like pole barn?
Well, we're going to have to fix up the house this Friday and then move into it. Think so long we got the fire. Fire was actually...
Taking away at the house.
We just... Spotting out the water. And four, two will work on the house eventually.
Perfect.
Is that going to have a shared septic system? Is that why that are the tanks over there by the house?
Correct, yes.
Is that existing already, the debt tank?
Nope, there's no... Webbing engineers working on it right now.
For the whole project, obviously.
Correct.
Doesn't look like you have any lights on the... You're looking from Carver Street, the left side of the property. Am I wrong?
There should be some on the building itself. Some in the parking lot. And then there's some on the building itself.
So on the side next to your house, it doesn't have?
Oh, I see what you're saying. They don't put any there. There should be.
There is a small garage door that you've...
Could be one of the...
It should be one of the basement doors.
Okay, so you can add that. You have a garage door going off the side of your house. Is that what you're saying?
Not the house itself, the floor.
The gable end of the pole barn.
Oh, okay. There is a light there.
Okay.
On both sides.
Okay, that's...
Front and back. And then like, so like I'm saying like front. And this is the right side where your reprocessed asphalt is. And then the back, but the left side on the same side of the house. There isn't any lights. Is there any need for lights on that side? I mean, I guess that would be the preference, right?
Yeah. There's not really any need for anything.
Okay. And so the fire chief is putting these in as like an FPA regulation? Do you would file and stuff like that?
Correct.
Yes, we've been working with him.
You guys putting a sign out front?
I don't believe so.
No.
You expect any patrons at the office or anything like that? Or is this just storage, no office?
No office.
Cool.
Anybody else have any comments or questions?
No, don't see any.
Open it up to the public. Is there anybody here to speak on? Right.
Chris Roberts, 129 South Street. Has a question on the wood chip storage. Do you have questions for stores? Do you have to be processed outside? Who do you charge the price for? What type of chip? No doubt, I don't remember. If you check it out.
Any other questions? Brendan, good?
No, I'm good.
All right, the way the process works is it has to go up for review for the other boards. And they have 30 days to get back to us. 30 days is enough, so we can't really act on this tonight. So we have to go to the next meeting.
Okay.
And then any other comments that come back from the boards would be brought up at the next meeting. And then we can make a decision.
Did you have an appointment for the next meeting?
We have... That's on there.
Sure.
Our next meeting is July 1, right?
July 1, okay. So you should come back on July 1.
Yep.
Okay. Excellent.
We have the time open for July 1. Any more questions? From up?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up.
We have this day on the time. I don't know what time it is.
7:28. Come on Brendan. Nice to meet you. Introducing myself.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, sorry.
Yeah, this is the first time in person.
I know, really. We heard about a year ago or something.
Yeah, right? I was over there tucking on the Zoom with...
Didn't work?
Waiting for something to let me in and there wasn't one. So 6:58, I jumped in my truck.
Did you have a couple of bills you want to...
Yeah.
Know a couple of bills?
We have bills here. One is for $1,369 for a revolving account payment for Amory Engineers for flower and soul. It's invoice number 15616A. I motion to pay this bill.
Sir, second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 I have another bill for Amory Engineers. Invoice number 15616B for curtains, oils, energy... I'm sorry, engineering services in the amount of $444. I motion to pay this bill.
Your motion is the second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do we all have to sign this?
Gap in the corner.
Top right hand corner.
Yes, you have the line something like kind of like a little bit down from the right.
Then I realize we all had to do it.
Things have been different since you bring on. It was like COVID signing.
Okay. Sorry about that. No, you're good. You're good.
Okay, time being 7:30. We'll move into continuation Josh Liddell for 285 Home Street Site Plan Review.
Gordon, I got the recues sitting in the audience.
Yep. Joe, could you note that 7:30 Rick has stepped up?
Hello.
Does everybody get the information on Liddell?
Thank you. I didn't bring my site plan either. This one's hard to see. Do we have any large site plans on hand?
Yep.
I did drive by and stop in here, but I'm familiar with that property. Very familiar with that property. But I wanted to be sure to check off every box.
Yeah. Did you get a chance to see that Brendan?
I'm looking at it right now.
Okay.
Yeah. No, I mean I can...
He's got good eyes. He can use the little...
It's all right. Thank you.
Josh, did we get revised plans?
Yeah. The notes changed. I think I sent them in a couple of days after the last meeting.
Um, I don't have my notes from last meeting. I guess I wouldn't really need revised. I forgot.
Note number seven?
Number seven.
Oh, right. Thank you. I was like scanning my brain on this one. Right.
So I don't... I don't have the big plan as a revised plan. Did we not get replacement plans?
I sent it via email.
Okay. The changes are reflected on this one. Amy? You have the little one?
Yeah. I'm trying to read. So that basically takes care of the problem of sending water out into the road. All that change is an iron off of the note.
Okay. For number seven with the water? Where's the water going to go now?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Any questions?
I don't.
Did we have the letter from Steve Haywood at the last meeting? Because it says the third.
No, I believe that we received any notification from Steve after last meeting.
Joanne?
Yes?
The letter from the highway surveyor was dated June third, but we didn't have it for the meeting last time, correct?
It would be the last one.
Yeah, I know. This is, is, it was sent June third at two thirty-seven PM. So I don't think we had it at the meeting. Okay.
Sent before the meeting, but at June three.
Yeah, do you want to read that in? Yeah, well, I just wanted to read that letter in if we didn't the last time.
Okay, so I am reading an email that we received on June third, two thirty-seven, but the planning board didn't have it at their last meeting due to, you know, Zoom stuff. So it states, "Hi, Joanne. After looking at the site plan for two eighty-five Home Street, I have a couple of concerns. I'm not against this project, but I'm concerned about the water runoff. With the new stormwater laws, bylaws, the town is supposed to know where all runoff, water runoff goes. This plan shows two leaching Seabees for the gravel work area, but does not have any information about them and does not show that the work areas are pitched or sloped to the Seabees." And the general note, number seven, says sloped surrounding impervious areas and will not drain onto Home Street. Where is surrounding impervious areas and where will the water end up? Thank you, Steve Haywood."
Did Josh, you have rebuttal to that?
I did, yeah. I rebutted with a email and then I followed it up with a formal letter.
Do you want me to read that for you? Would you like to read your own letter?
Uh, you can read it, that's fine.
I'll read the email reply from Joshua Liddell to the planning board and it's regarding, obviously, two eighty-five Home Street. "Thank you for the email. I understand your concern. As you are aware, over the last several weeks, there has been a substantial amount of rain in the area. That being said, there has been no issues with the water runoff at the two eighty-five Home Street property. As stated in the last two planning board meetings, we used a Q-PAC material. Contrary to what some people say, the material does drain very well. Also, no elevations changes were made to the front sides of the property. Thank you, Joshua Liddell." And then you sent this formal. So then on June ninth, to the town of Halifax Planning Board, "Attention, Joanne Snow. Again, read two eighty-five Home Street. Dear Ms. Snow, after rereading my email, I would like to rescind my first sentence. Please see the attached original email sent Monday, June seventh, 2021. I do appreciate your email. I don't understand your concern about any water runoff out to Route Thirty-six, parentheses, Home Street. No elevations were changed that would cause any additional runoff to Road. We have had snow melt after the winter and a substantial amount of rain throughout the last several months. The entire lot has been monitored. I have not seen any signs of runoff issue. Also, as stated in my original email, the material drains very well. You should not be concerned. Very truly yours, Liddell Brothers, Josh Liddell." What is Q-PAC?
It's just like a dense grade material that can be gravelage material you can smooth drive on, so it doesn't turn into like mud.
Okay. I think I might have it on my driveway.
Okay. Anybody else from the board have anything? Anybody from the audience? Rick?
What we're not talking about here is a sixty thousand square feet property that's created high level that's pitched into the street. You know, just curious, all that rain runoff soon to go. And when we talk about the bylaws, doesn't MS four come into effect here?
MS four, you said?
Stormwater runoff control. In 2019, it was a bylaw to manage runoff by anything over here. You know, I just get in before you do anything, they're supposed to have a topographical map for and after, to show where all runoff flows. And it just seems like all we're talking about is around the building with a couple of catch bases thrown in. There's no specs on it. There's no factulation for drainage. I was just, you know, I'm just throwing it out there. I mean, you know, I thought it was probably George who was responsible for forcing MS four. You know, it's just something new. It's going to be, you know, for the last, almost three years ago, it was a bylaw. And it's just a rose control where the law is going to go.
Do you have a copy of that law with you so I can see it, please? I don't have stormwater with me, sorry.
You know, something that a lot of people love about, and everybody pretty much seems to ignore it.
Oh, I do, I do.
But it is a bylaw. And the grading was drastically changed in the back of the property. You know, if you took a look at it, you'd have to be lying to see this awful lot of rock water running down. And all it has is a little couple of catch bases they've stuck in to try to do really nothing. And, you know, you talk about how it's in a leaching of the Q-PAC. Well, what happens when it freezes in the winter? Where's the water going to go then? It's not graded to the basins. It's just run right all the way from the back of the property to the front to the building. And after a good rain, you can see it. It just pours up around. Yeah, I have, I'm across the tracks. I have a bird's eye view. I can see where it's going to go. I've been there for thirty-nine years. I've seen it go around. Just, you know, just put it there so the boards understand and, you know, who's going to, you know, be wrong. You know, this seems odd. We just had really come in and get the contention base. Every, every commercial, professional side I see in the review has drainage errors. We contain the drains on the property. Why doesn't it apply here? So I'm just curious to look at. Why doesn't it apply?
So you're saying that there's been no change to the actual site plan to grade the land specifically into the catch basins?
Well, there's been drastic changes in the property since the water.
But not specifically to address where the water runoff is?
I don't think how the catch basin do anything. That's how I look at it. It's an awful lot of water. Just they're not taking that consideration. All they're talking about is a big park in our front that's going to drain to the Q-PAC. This is it. Well, yeah, maybe on a good hot day it might do that, but, you know, the water has to go into a, you have to have a drain system for the water to go and stay on the property.
Got it.
I mean, yeah, it might, it might hurt in the Q-PAC a little bit, but what happens in the ground? What happens there? I see it all the time. You know, you have an area that drains great in summer, then freezes in the winter, it rains, snow melt, where's it going? It's going up. Like I see it going people to basins. You know, I've been doing this for forty-five years. I've seen, I've seen it all.
Okay. Thoughts?
I guess, you know, the only thing I'll say is if, you know, anybody that knows grades and elevations, I certainly do. It's what I do for a living as well. Not forty-five years, but I think like twenty-three years. So if you, you know, if you look at the property, there's, there's no drastic slopes anywhere. It's a gradual, everything's gradual. And it's, it is, it does, it does drain fine. So if we were talking about, you know, paving and stuff like that, I, I, I would agree with Rick. I would. But as far as the water runoff right now, I, I just, there hasn't been any issues. So I, I don't see any issue. I don't.
Would you take it as number seven being if there was an issue, you'd obviously come back and fix it? Because?
Absolutely.
And that's basically what number seven says?
Yes.
And what are your thought processes on any green space?
As far as just landscape? Is that what you mean or what's green space?
Well, is that what you were stating? Like I'm trying to address all your questions?
Well, if you know, if they said perhaps that they like the looks of it, that's why they, you know, well, I mean, one of my neighbors just moved the fence. I guess he did move the fence. Yeah. It's their fault. We didn't do it. I'm trying to, and this is kind of what I thought. Maybe one bit of it, but it's pretty much opened right up to everything. And, you know, on a good, good day when that dries up, it's a dust storm over there. And that's just, you know, I can't park my black truck out there, you know. The stuff is no, you know, no attempt to, you know, do anything for any butters, any screening, any vegetation or nothing. It's just a big giant gravel park. A whole piece of everything's in the property. No, no vegetation, no mistaking or nothing. I guess, you know, in their opinion, that's what they like to look at. So what are you going to do? That's what they like. I don't, I don't know. I don't know what. My, my whole thing was the storm runoff. I just thought of the planning board responsibility to consider the storm runoff. So that's one of the reasons I brought it up.
Yeah, and I, that's why I'm talking to you about it and I just read that.
And I, yeah, that's good news to me too. It's just something a lot of people don't pay attention to.
It's new.
If one of them is, should be paying attention to it on site plan. Because the storm was just up to the bylaws.
It's, it's new and it went through as a new bylaw under the finance committee and didn't get looked at by the planning board in order to come into town.
Well, it's been there three years ago. They adopted the bylaw. It was in 2019.
Yeah, it was like, uh...
But it's just something that's big in lots of towns and do.
It was fall of nineteen.
Three years they have to have it made in, they have to have it. It's what I understand. I'm just, I'm willing to.
You have every right and isn't butter to talk?
I'm not going to buy that stuff.
To Liddell?
No, I'm only outside the tracks. I'm close enough. All that should have refused it because, you know, I can't say I can't park the van and probably be doing this. So, so that's, you know.
Oh, I thought that made you an abutter.
If you're within two hundred feet, you're considered an abutter?
Yeah, it's not like you actually have to be like touching.
Well, I mean, like I said, I have a bird's eye view. I've been there for thirty-nine years. I, you know, I even saw, I even backed over that building when I blacked it. Saw a railroad bed. If a railroad truck, you break through that door.
Yeah, well, you know, I, I grew up on Colby Drive, so it was a tough, tough time when the train went through. So I understand changes are hard.
So if, if it seems as though, you feel as though the site plan they put in place does not address the drain issue and you feel as though it does?
Steve Haywood's saying the same thing. See, maybe you send it up to the reviews, you have a real answer, you know.
Okay.
And you've got to take part in the best bet to solve everything.
Anybody else want to comment?
Uh, yeah, so I, just to go back a little bit, there is definitely going to be some, some landscaping there for sure. It's not just going to be the way that it looks now. We just, obviously, we're not doing anything until we get this, you know, situation rectified. You know, as far as, I mean, we had, we hired Gary Rice to go in and do his job and he created the site plan. It wasn't us, obviously, and that's what was submitted. And he didn't bring up any issues and he's been doing that for a long, long, long time. So that's why we had him create the plan. If he brought something up, we'd be having a different conversation right now. And if anything needs to be done, we're going to do it. So I, I, I don't see, I mean, I, I understand one person's concern because I don't like what their view is out there, out of their front yard anymore, which I, I, I understand. But it is, you know, our property. We can, we can do what we want. We're trying to go through the right process and I just, I feel is because of one person's opinion, it's getting dragged out a little bit. And I don't think we're doing anything wrong. So if, if we are, we'll, we'll do the right thing. That's all. And honestly, if, if there's something else we need to do, say it and we'll do it. And that's, that's kind of how we operate. So clearly, we're not trying to hide anything. I mean, you can drive by and look and see what's going on. And honestly, if there was, you know, maybe somewhat of a different approach and somebody's truck was getting dirty, we can talk about it and do something. So we're not out to try to pull the wool over anybody's eyes. We're just trying to do our thing, so, which we have every right to.
Yeah.
Would you be talking for landscaping plan?
I don't know yet, but I know that my uncle is, obviously, I mean, he's, he's into that stuff. We just kind of stopped. I know that he does want to beautify it. And that'll obviously, again, that'll, you know, help any erosion. And that'll obviously, again, that'll, you know, help any erosion concerns. So we work on the highway on slopes all the time. And that's one of the biggest things that we deal with is erosion control. So, um, I don't know what that plan is yet, but something's definitely coming for sure.
So would that be considered a modification to the site plan or anything like that?
No, that's just aesthetics, all right?
Well, it could be, it could be part of the site plan.
What do we think about, um, review, review engineer? Or maybe in number seven where it says proposed paved parking to slope to surrounding pervious areas and will not drain onto Home Street? What if we made it that that was part of the decision later, letter to emphasize that he would have to come back to us if there was any issues with that to straighten it out? Or do we send him to review? You know what I mean?
Yeah, I mean, I feel, I feel like to his point, he hired an engineer on purpose, right? To do, to do the engineer's job, right? So if the engineer had a, a concern that there was going to be an additional drainage issue, then that probably would have been up, been addressed. Is there a way, and I'll defer to the people who have more experience, to put in a letter, you know, almost like a contingency? That if it proved, the site plan proves to have a drainage issue, that it can be brought back in front of the planning board to be, to be addressed?
Well, that was exactly what I was thinking.
Just because, I mean, it comes down to a matter of opinion. I'm not an engineer. Our job is just to know the bylaws and the bylaws have been brought up. And it's just, if that's something that can be done, you won't know until something starts.
I can, I can guarantee you that if there's any issues with that property, it's going to be fixed right away. I mean, right away. So.
Out of pride of ownership.
Huh?
Out of pride of ownership.
Hundred percent.
Yeah.
So what are you, what are your thoughts on that?
Well, I'm just looking out myself.
Well, but the problem is, is Rick's recused himself, so.
No, I meant more as in a butter.
I mean, yeah, but as, at, at this point, this is discussion between the board.
Okay.
I mean, you know, you gotta, gotta keep it.
Okay.
So, I mean, is it conditional? Yeah, you can do a conditional for sure.
And then the condition would be that they come back to us?
If, upon request. If it was brought to our attention that the, the drainage was not as originally perceived, then we would request another attendance and another, another discussion upon it. And then it is addressed from there. Right? I mean, I feel more comfortable with that than just passing off on it or saying no.
It could be done.
I will make a, I'm looking for, don't I have to read that site plan? Beginning to make a motion? Which I have at home on my desk.
I should have it in a folder here too.
I, I don't. I have the correspondence, but I don't have, um... Well, I, okay, so I can use the site plan, um, like in the corner on the bottom?
Yeah.
And then put that in as a contingency that lines up with the, with the original, with the bottom off? Yep.
I will make a motion to approve the site plan at 285 Home Street, Halifax, Massachusetts. Dated... To somebody, oh, May 12, 2021. With the condition of following the general notes on the plan. And number seven, proposed paved parking to slope to surrounding pervious areas and will not drain onto Home Street to follow MCM for construction site stormwater runoff control. And the applicant agrees that if there are any issues, that he will come back to the planning board willingly and deal with those issues.
So I have a motion seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Need to get you a little gabble. Need to bring your, your worshipful gabble.
So I would just make sure, right, that we have the plan in the office to sign?
Yeah, if we could get a full-size plan.
And we'll get a determination letter out that states the motion with that condition.
Okay. So bring the plan to the, um...
Plan and board office. They probably bring four copies.
Good job.
All right.
Ready to go?
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Good luck. What time is it?
It's eight o'clock.
Perfect timing. We're going to be bringing up for eight o'clock, the Twin Lake Liquors, 657 Mon Ponsett Street, complaint discussion.
And I'm going to refuse myself.
So, um, at the last meeting, we discussed some complaints to do with Twin Lakes Liquor Store. And I've seen a lot of differences in the fence coming down, furniture being picked up, trash being picked up. But we do have some complaints and comments. So I will go through and read them and then we can go to the public discussion. I have Nicole Nelligan with lighting issues. This was June 11th at 9:05 a.m. Good morning, the national grid light that is on the telephone pole on the left side, parentheses, when facing Twin Lakes, is going beyond Twin Lakes property line, shining directly at our bedroom window and needs to be repositioned. Please see attached photos. First picture of my house to show light. The first picture is my house to show light going beyond the property, which really doesn't show up in the picture that we have here. Sorry.
Used up all of our ink though. Thanks a lot, guys. Appreciate it. We'll have to pass another bill on expenses later.
And, and, but we can see in this picture, so I guess your house would be, yeah, right? And then, um, June 13th, Nicole, at 1:51 p.m. Good afternoon, yesterday, the temporary fences were taken down and the weeds in front of the property were taken care of. The property looks a great deal better, unfortunately. The first people that thought the liquor store was open got out of their car today and began barking at my dogs. Yes, a grown man barking to get a rise out of my dogs. I'm asking prior to the liquor store being open for the private, privacy fence to be installed. I apologize that I continuously have to send in complaints. I want nothing more to have these issues dealt with so I can stop taking time out of both of our days. Thank you, Nicole. And then, um, let me make sure. Okay. I think these are pretty much in order, right, Joanne? Okay, thank you. From the owner, I believe, Lawrence Gorgody. Huh?
I'm sorry, this is Lawrence Gorgody. I'm on the, I'm dealing with that.
Oh, sorry. Thank you.
When you're ready, you can see further.
Oh, okay. Do you want to start off with that?
Yeah.
All right, to be continued.
I like the bullet point. With all, with all due respect to the barking man, I'm open to all suggestions on how to deal with that. That's a good one.
I mean...
Get a taser fence.
I've been doing this for a while. And I honestly, you know, I mean, it's not fun. But when I saw that, I'm thinking, we can deal with lighting, we can deal with privacy, we can deal with, with, you know, with a fence. You know, a barking man is a little bit harder to deal with. Were there any other, other concerns?
No, I mean, he came over to the toilet today and we talked. After this came way to work ahead, after this complaint happened, him and his father came to the house today, and we talked about a lot of something, a lot of issues that needed to be addressed. And, I mean, we came up with some conclusions, uh, per se, but, uh, I mean...
Well, there's nothing we can do about an individual, yeah. So, but we're going to do this and, okay. Thank you.
Well, I mean, I will let, first of all, this is, this is Mr. Patel, Kenny Patel.
Hi, Mr. Patel.
Who's the owner.
All right.
And this is Jim Paul, who's the electrical contractor. Who installed the lights. If I can, I'd like to deal with some of the simpler issues first.
Okay.
Because I believe the more, sort of complex one, um, is the lighting. I will let obviously Adam and Nicole speak for themselves. But I do think that we've, that we've made a lot of headway in the last few weeks. The, the site has been, you know, it's, it's almost like, at least our side of it is, you know, it looks a lot better now. And the temporary fence is down. With respect to the light that's on the utility pole, Edison, or sorry, National Grid worked the site yesterday. And they have redirected the light in question. And that was the one that I think, I think Nicole said you that had this, exactly, yeah. So that, that light has now been, um, has been moved so it points not quite at Adam's house. We don't know if that has, if it's going to be okay now, but we will see that as we drive home on our way back.
Okay.
Yeah? Oh, it has? Oh, you did, okay.
We're going to direct everything up here. Sorry, guys. Yeah, just to keep control of everything. No, don't be. So we'll, we'll, we'll deal with that and you're willing to keep moving on and dealing with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I don't know the property, but I do believe that that particular light on that particular pole has been, has been there for a long time. It's not, it's not new. And I don't know that for sure, but I have an old, old site plan that shows the site when the restaurant was there.
Alanus?
Is that what it was called?
Way back, but then Pogo's was there for a short stint too.
Well, this is, I don't even, even, even know when I got this. But this is a site plan that shows the liquor store and the restaurant when it was there. And there's utility pole number two, which is the pole in question. And it shows, it shows the light fixture on that. So that's kind of at least go back to when, you know, to when the restaurant was there. But we will deal with it.
Right.
You know, regardless.
I mean, new problem, old problem. Just because it's been there for a while, doesn't mean it wasn't a problem then either, you know?
Correct. I just, I, I was under the impression initially that that was new.
Oh, got it.
Because I think, I think Nicole had said that, that it was the new light and I was, you know, I was confused. That, that's actually has been there for a while.
I would say I drove by this property this afternoon. And from an aesthetic standpoint, it looks night and day from what it was.
It looks great.
Yeah, it looks significantly better than even just two weeks ago. So, yeah, that's...
I agree.
Which I think shows good faith, right? That the complaints are being...
And, you know, it's would have been nice if not, I'd deal with you guys, just kind of get between us and we're a lot better. Not what I want to do on a weekend off, sitting here.
It's all right. We'll, we'll get through it.
As far as the privacy issues, which were also a concern, Kenny has been attempting to get, get a fencing contractor to come down and look at, at the fence and give, you know, prices for, for alternative fencing. We would like to put the new fence, which would be solid, as opposed to the chain link. We, we would like to put that up where the chain link fence is, is now. According to, to the engineer's site plan, the fence is 70 feet away from the side of the building. And I've checked, I checked the measurement of that and to within a couple of inches, it is 70 feet. We can't really move that inboard of the chain link fence because we need, uh, we need the 70 feet of parking that I can just, yeah.
Thank you.
So as you can see there...
You guys are at 649? Okay. All right, perfect. That's just, you're marked on the, just want to make sure that we're, we're all on the same page.
That's all right.
Okay.
So if you see, if we start the spaces against the building, five feet away from the building, then you have the length of the space. And then the spaces, space against the fence, the distance between the back of spaces against the building and the back of the spaces against, against the fence is 25 feet. And you really don't want to go much, much, you can go, I, I talked to Joe Webby on this yesterday. You know, and he said, well, you can, you know, you can reduce that, but, you know, it's, it's, like, it's, it's, it starts to get kind of tight.
It's going to get tight.
Yeah.
How tall is the proposed fence that you're...
Six feet.
Six feet of solid fence?
It'll be solid. It, it could be, it could be wood, it could be plastic, but it, it would be solid.
Would you guys be opposed of, uh, because, uh, I forget exactly what date it was when we first started talking about taking down the old part of the restaurant and then doing some work to the outside of the building? Do you guys be opposed at this point with all of these changes coming in front of us for a full site plan instead of a partial site plan? And, and be full on and give us the full details? Where, that's what I think needs to happen at this point. I think there's so many things going on, lighting, parking, fencing, landscaping. It's, I think we need to get to a, a proper site plan approval.
Well, can I just ask you this then? Would you, would you want the site plan reviewed to be for the entire site?
So on this site, you guys, let me confirm. They're showing, um, can you see that?
I can see better.
I promise I'm trying. So if you see, like... Yeah, because the number one, they took that part down that was dilapidated. And we, were you on with us when we said that we wouldn't care about certain things?
Uh, no, but I remember.
Okay. They're now talking about the existing house, the rest of the parking lot, and what used to be a transmission shop being hot. They're, I think, I think what you're asking is if we would do a site plan with only half of the property?
Well, here's, here's the thing.
Okay, fair. Okay, fair.
And I don't want to go too far down this particular road, but the proposed retail cannabis store, which is proposed, emphasized, to go in the space beside the liquor store, and I show that on the...
Attached to you, or...
Yes.
That's the tenant space?
Yes.
The one that was supposed to be just storage for the liquor store when you came in front of us the last time?
Correct. Because at that time, and I have the meeting minutes from the meeting we had over a year ago, if you want to see that. I think you even discussed that, like, at the last meeting, where I came in, because the building inspector had asked me to, just as an informal review, and you all decided that, look, you said, we don't really need to do an informal review.
First time.
I asked for something in writing, and then we basically agreed that, that, you know, at the time, that the meeting minutes would speak for themselves, which is fine, I think. Okay, yeah. So, on the 11th of this month, we learned that the board of selectmen decided against, or the two people who voted out of the three, because Gordon had to recuse himself. They, they voted not to sign the HCA. And about a week before that, we, because I'm acting for the cannabis people as well in terms of architectural plans and helping with the permitting, we had instructed Webby Engineering to start the site plan review and the site plan for the cannabis store, which we know is going to have to get a special permit, and we know is going to be subjected to the site plan review. I had explained to Kenny that we can't just do, you know, do a line up up the middle and do a site plan review for them alone, that we're gonna have to take everything into consideration, including lighting, store water management, and the whole thing. But, so, that was in the works. But what we learned of the decision of the board of selectmen last, last Friday, we have paused on the engineering until that gets sorted out. So, if we were to come in and do a full, full-fledged site plan review for just, you know, for just the liquor store, I will, you know, like, I will have to, you know, I mean, I would have to, well, we'd have to engage Webby to do it, because it's gotta be, it's gotta be certified. But, again, if you look at this plan here, he, we only need 23 spaces for parking. The area of, of the retail, or the retail area of the store is 2,146 square feet. So, at 100 square feet, we need 22 spaces. And then, the parking regs in the zone call for one space for every two...
Employments.
Yes. So, his, so in other words, I, you know, I mean, I would have to put a line up here and just do the site plan review for what pertains to him.
Uh, I don't know how that can really happen, yeah?
No, so, from what I'm hearing is, is that we're having a conversation about the liquor store and getting the liquor store open with the abutters, certain complaints that need to be addressed. And now we're starting to move into a potential, now we're starting to transition into a secondary business on the site plan, which I understand the engineering needs to be kind of cohesive to the, to the both of them. But I also remember, and we'd have to go back to the minutes, this was before I was on the board, so forgive me, as I was just a resident. But when we were originally talking about passing, having the construction and the demolition of the dilapidated part of the building, and then somebody asked about what that extra space was gonna be used for, and at that time in that meeting, and maybe something else is brought up since, but it was purely designed specifically, as it says here, but just for storage of the liquor unit, of the liquor store. And it was left at that because there were no other businesses that had been put in.
Correct, yeah, so...
Now it's going into a cannabis store, so...
At that time, like, on the 21st of May of last year, that was all we knew.
Right.
And in discussing and reviewing...
Officially, though. Because I had heard it, and I wasn't even involved yet, so...
You, sorry, you had heard what?
I'd heard that there were some rumors about a potential cannabis store going into this place, because somebody had actually asked the question on this, somebody actually asked the question on the meeting, and it was declined, as it was only gonna be the storage.
Honestly, that's the first I've heard of that.
Okay, either way, so I think, I think the, on the agenda, or maybe it was just the rumors amongst the streets of the residents of Halifax, however...
I can tell you, I mean, I'm being honest anyway, what I can tell you is to say, honestly, I had no clue as to what might ultimately end up in that space. And I called it storage, because on the building permit application, I had to call it something. And at the time, you could walk from the back of the liquor store into this area. That area happened to be the dining room of the old, of the old restaurant. The part that we took down that was about to fall down, I believe, was mainly kitchen. But, you know, I...
Either way, it doesn't need to get into hearsay about who said what and how and what the rumor mill was, but at the end of the day...
What the rumor mill was, you know, I can't stop that, but I, you know, I don't want to try, I don't want to mix the liquor store with whatever it might be going in. Okay, next door.
Okay.
I'm trying to just keep things simple for the liquor store.
Okay.
But if you, if you, if you want us to do a detailed site plan for the liquor store, can you tell me exactly what you, what you would want to see, because, because Webby...
Webby knows what our bylaws are, and they're chapter 167, and then the store management, so I would say that you could develop the site plan, but we have to do this as we've gotten past the... I'm sorry, I don't mean to, in my opinion, I'm stating right now, I know we need a vote, but in my opinion, we need to, like, step forward into getting a site plan, because it's now getting into a lot of abutters having, you know, conversations, and we need to get a full-on plan. We don't want to be sitting here having complaints and arguments and back and forth unfortunate...
So what are they trying to do now, just open the package store that was there before? It was, they haven't changed what was there. It's a package store that they're gonna open, package store again. So my thought... Continued use of what was there. To that point, is, is I don't want to also get in the way of them opening their business, you know...
Well, the store is open.
Right, but continuing this and moving forward without, because opening a cannabis store next door, or another business, for whatever that other business may be, I feel it's gonna be a whole nother conversation for a whole nother meeting.
That's a whole nother ballgame.
Right, because that's like something that may happen, like, we can't pause things because of that, right?
Because if, if they decide to put another business in this tenant space or storage space, for whatever reason that it was labeled as that, then that's gonna cause for a whole new site plan for all new parking spaces and all that other stuff, because of...
Well, let me ask you, if, if, if we had a use, you know, let's say hypothetically, you know, I don't know what, but let's say that there was a proposed use that was, that was allowed there as a matter of right, that did not need a special permit, why would we have to do a full-blown site, site plan review?
Assuming that the site plan, the site plan that's been voted on can sustain the business and traffic flow that whatever business goes in there would then...
But, but you haven't voted, voted on any site plan here.
So that's what we're talking about right now, is do you want us to vote on what's here and then bring you back for whatever business goes in? Or do you want us to say, bring us a full-fledged flight plan, uh, site plan for whatever could potentially go in next door? So that we can then look at it as...
Because if it's a full-fledged site plan, we know would be required if a special permit is required. Am I right?
Yeah, right.
But right now, am I correct in stating that that special, like, that was denied by the selectmen, is that true?
What was denied by the board of selectmen was to, they said, they voted no to signing the HCA. No site plan has been submitted officially to the town.
Well, we need that, because in, at this point in time, there's changes being made, other than what we discussed at that meeting. I forget the date of it, you have it in front of you, but we're, we're at the point now that we have abutters coming in, and this is the... Second or third meeting?
So let me, let me just address one of the things that you said, why would, if, no matter what the business that goes in next door, why would we need to revisit a site plan area for that matter? Because just from a precedent standpoint, our very, our last four meetings, we talked about another cannabis store going in on Route 106. And we brought in, we had to bring in, or the attorneys had to bring in, um, traffic professionals and talking about all of that. So if you're gonna put a, let's say you were to put a storage unit there for people to rent out storage space, and you're gonna have no traffic there, that's one thing, but if you're gonna have 40 to 50 people per hour coming in and out to pick up whatever delivery or appointment that they may have, from a retail standpoint, that would have to be addressed for a new site plan. Just like at the old place, there's an alarm system, an alarm company and a cabinet company currently there, but we needed to go through all of this again, through a new site plan to address traffic and abutters and whether or not they were willing to have that business in their neighborhood.
Is it not fair to say that what, what, what triggered the need for a full-blown site plan for the Flower and Soul property was the fact that they had to get a special permit?
In my opinion now, it's, first of all, it's a different animal that it's a special permit, but we're looking at fences. We're looking at all kinds of different things that we weren't talking about before, because it's a second meeting of getting all kinds of complaints from the abutters, so I think that the site plan would be a way to make it so that we all agree, we follow the bylaws, and I think that's what needs to happen.
Well, may I suggest that we do this? In a few minutes, Jim, I think, I think the last major concern here is the lighting. And it's the lighting that was recently installed on the side of the building. I would suggest that we have Jim go through the lighting issue, the most recently installed lighting issue, and we will call National Grid again and have them redirect...
We caught that, we caught it.
Oh, you did again, I didn't realize.
They tried to redirect, they tried to redirect the light, it didn't work, so we called them back. And see, they redirect it, it doesn't work, then they own the light of the pole. If they don't do that, just kill it, we're done with it, you know what I mean?
So, what I was gonna say, Amy, is that let's, let's wait and see what happens in terms of a resolution on the lighting. I believe we do have a resolution on the fence and, you know, and the cleanliness. But the last remaining item are these lights.
Okay, thank you. In other words, we could go down, as you said, you don't want to technically go down this road quite this deep in this meeting.
Correct.
So if we were to just keep to the, to the agenda of what the bullet points were, is what you guys are trying to get accomplished, which is why you guys are here on, the time that you're here, right? It was, the site looks a lot better, right? The fence is proposed to be a six-foot fence that's solid. That should also slide down, hopefully, to take care of the barking humans. Right? Because if it's a solid, it's one thing if it's a chain link fence and you get that riffraff, but...
Right, so, yeah, I mean, we agree with the fence, so... Okay, right, yeah.
So, hold on, we haven't opened it up to the public yet?
Yeah.
It was more of just addressing the, the agenda points that are on our list, right? I'm sorry?
I'm only...
Yeah, and then, and then fixing the lighting situation, right? So if we can handle those three points...
But see, the site plan would be redone by the cannabis company when they came in. Flower and Soul did their own work. It wouldn't be Mr. Patel doing it, it would just be, let's get this site ready for what we already have. Everything else is futureist.
Right.
That we don't know if it's gonna go forward or not go forward. So I think that we need to follow 16728 and make sure that we're doing this correctly by our bylaws, which is to make sure that they have a site plan that, because we're getting way beyond what we agreed to before. And we're getting into complaints, even if we aren't, we have complaints from the abutters that now we need to take care of formally, we need to follow the bylaw.
And all, all I'm suggesting is that if you give us maybe, maybe another week, we think we can come to a resolution on the fence. I guess what I'm trying to get at here, I don't want to have to spend money to have Webby Engineering come in and do a partial site plan, which may change further down the road, if...
I'm, I'm sorry, but that's like a modification of site plan, and I believe Flower and Soul, who's not the owner of 894 Plymouth Street, did all of the site plan, right? They, they paid for it and did all of that, am I wrong, Rick?
Yeah.
So it wouldn't be under your, like, you can have them modify the site plan to suit them, but at this time, we need to have you, the current owner? Not you, but, right?
Representative, yeah.
You own the property, we need you to have a site plan. And I, I don't know if you guys agree with that or not.
What do you think?
Well, since it's existing, I mean, is that really necessary? I mean, it seems like the big issue here is the lighting and the fence. But why choose, why would the two addresses never only one? What is that, so it's 65 minutes?
Oh, okay. Hold on, we need to open it up into the public, hold on, we'll get to you, I promise.
No, just for the record, just as a, I'm still learning too, it's cool. Just as for the, the process, we deal here, and then we'll go, now, we're gonna open it to the public, and we'll have that conversation, but I promise you, everybody will get their chance to speak. Totally get that. So, so from the bullet points that I have in front of me, right? The lot looks better, the lighting needs to be addressed, and the fencing needs to be addressed. Right? That's where we're at right now.
Right.
But we need a site plan.
This beforehand, and we need to get it on track, because it's now not the same. Like, even with the site plan that was there, now we're only looking at half the parking lot, like...
Right.
And we have issues with the abutters, and now we're technically not following the bylaw.
Because we can't approve half of the proposed...
But he does, he just needs to do this, and then if he's gonna have somebody do this, then they have to come in and do that.
Right, which is what I'm saying that Flower and Soul had to do.
Right.
Right. And we're only using Flower and Soul because it may be a potential cannabis, but if not, if it's something else under those...
I'll just make this, I'll just make this one final point. I don't know what site plan you have that you're about to open up there.
So now, like, everything's different, the restaurant's gone, and they're only showing half the parking lot, you know? Like, there's a, there's a lot of things here that we might be opening ourselves up for liability-wise if we don't make sure that this is done.
Yeah, this is from 1998, so it's a little, it's a little dated, but...
So, but, okay, if I go back, I'm only gonna make this point one, one more time, but I want to emphasize this point.
Correct.
When I was in front of you on the 21st of May of last year, you said that nothing that we were proposing for the liquor, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm paraphrasing this, but I can, I can give you a copy, the copy's here. You didn't feel that anything we were doing on the liquor store warranted a full site plan review.
Right.
For reasons that we weren't expanding the footprint of the building, all the work was inside.
Yeah.
And now we're faced with, and the abutters are entitled to voice their concerns. But now because the abutters are voicing their concerns, nothing has changed in terms of the construction that was proposed at the time to what has been open right now.
The proposed use for that space was storage for the liquor store.
Yes, because I had to call it something.
Well, storage in business is very different, though, isn't it?
No, no, hold on.
If I have, if I have a garage, but then I want to run a business out of my garage, it's very different.
I had to call that space something.
And you called it storage?
Yes.
Storage is very different, where it doesn't require more parking spaces and more things that line up with what our bylaws are for this town.
All I'm saying is that at the time, we called it overflow storage for the liquor store, which was the intention.
Okay.
Now, we knew that it might someday be occupied by a tenant.
Understandable, yeah.
And then we would go for a change of use from storage to retail store, which is allowed as a matter of right.
Yep. But that would require a new, that would, that would then change you from not requiring a new site plan to now requiring a new site plan.
Why would you need a site plan if you're putting somebody in there that's allowed as a matter of right?
Because you're going from storage to retail.
Just because it's a change of use?
It was the scene...
More parking, more cars...
More parking, more cars, more.
And it was the same business before because it was storage for the liquor store where now you want to open up another business on the same property. And that's why we're forced into, in my opinion, following.
Also, the the planning boards, you know, when we sign on to be the planning board, it's also to protect the character of the town of Halifax on behalf of the residents. So if the residents don't feel as though that that business specifically wants to come or they feel as though they're the butters don't feel as though they want to be that in their town or their community, then it raises a whole new issue other than storage of the liquor store. And with all due respect, of course.
Yeah, it's just about laws.
Why we have we have zoning bylaws in the town, correct?
Correct.
And we have, we have commercial districts and we have the AR district and we have conservancy districts. And it sets forth in the zoning bylaws what's allowed.
Correct.
Yes, it's either yes, no, or SP.
Okay.
Okay? And the, we could well come up with a use that is allowed. It's a yes. It's a Y. It's not an SP. So I'm just gonna.
At this point, that's used in storage.
And I don't, just just to clean things up, I don't think, as as long as the lighting is is addressed and the fencing is addressed, right? Yeah, no, 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 we're getting there. We're getting there. But but at the end of the day, well, it got brought up potentially that there'd be a new, there'd be another, right? So at the end of the day, if what we're here to talk about tonight is the lighting and the fencing, right, is addressed. But if the future brings a new resident, then it's gonna require a new site plan. And I think that that's might be where we're getting hung up here. So if we can clean that conversation up, I think we'd be able to move on relatively quickly.
I agree 100% with with okay, with what you're saying. I just think we can come to terms with the with with the concerns of the butters without having to go into
A full site plan. So.
So.
So do you think we should open up for the public now?
I think we should get on the same page as far as this and then open it up.
I can see what he's saying. If something happens, they get a tenant in there down the road, yeah, it's a whole new ballgame.
Right. So as long as as long as you understand.
Putting this in front of us sort of shows an intention. It shows, it shows an intention.
Says tenant, so.
And it shows an intention that's different than what we agreed to the last time. And it makes me nervous.
Still said storage, it wouldn't be an issue, right?
So.
I can change it.
Well, the the problem is, I think it'll end up being with the same situation of the last call where you called it storage. And then it now now be something different where if you just change it to storage now, we've now seen this. So it looks like, well, it's we're just changing just the whatever. So here's, here's the thing, though, so that people don't get fired up is what we're trying to talk about is fixing the lighting and getting some privacy fencing up so that the butters can be appeased and you guys can run your business without any more of these types of meetings until further notice. So I'm not, and you guys know way better than I do as far as the bylaws go, but I don't think that getting a full site plan to get the lighting fixed and the fencing situation squared away until a new, you know, person comes in or potential business comes in, and then it would require what we just went through with Flower and Soul.
I have a
And you can disagree with it all the time.
I have a joint in that due to the fact that they they put tenant space here and now it it opens up a new can of worms that wasn't there when we said that we would allow these certain things. And it sort of gets hairy.
I agree.
Where now we're not following the bylaw. Do you, do you guys agree that we should open it up to public?
Yes, I think we should open it up to public.
Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna go one person at a time. You need to state your name and address. And we'll move forward with the public. So who's, who would like to speak?
Would you need to step to the boat street, my property, of us go back to the store and the house of this property? My concerns are intention. Basically, the road between our properties, which is pretty much the main thing at this point, I know there's a better term for that, very quickly just come out here, that's come here. I just will look here. Meanwhile, basically, the road we can add fencing for privacy. I know this store was not this structure depends on location brings us storage for a I cannot trash and if you go in the yard and it's, there's a problem goes on in that property. I have a 11 year old, have a puppy, just kids in the neighborhood, so he has the intention. It's a liquor store right now, he knows there's a bit, sounds great on the earth. Seeing people before, we're here in Kansas, seeing what was proposed as an HPA, I understand it may go up in terms. But being future, I don't want to live next to that. I don't want to be one of them. I'm a mom and a girl, I think it's a task. I look like twenty people. I look like my pups.
Okay. Breathe.
I would like to see, I would like to see. I would like to bring attention to the house. It's going hard. There's a lot of wildlife out there. You got fox, you got coyote. You know, you guys know that I've seen it. I do today, chickens have been there. You don't even see all that. So yeah, I would like to show what's going on around back there. It would be nice if you could come, something side of.
Okay. Okay.
Okay.
There's more to say, but not right now.
Okay.
I think there, in the future, there will be time to voice that conversation when we have something more tangent in front of us as far as what the proposed is. But as of right now, it is approved as overflow storage. So I think we've gotten the point across that until that changes, we can just deal with the the privacy stuff. And then if whatever changes come in the future, there will be the first and third Thursday of every month. So. Yeah.
My name is Nicole Nelson. I'm at 649 El Popol Street. My major issue is at the board meeting on December 14th of 2020. It was a seven o'clock meeting. Mr. Gilgeri stated that the only exterior work would be simply food siding to improve the appearance of the property. Yet I have four lights all facing my bedroom now, which were not out of the original building. There's going to be one more light. Our fence is six feet. They're proposing a six foot fence, which would be great if their fence, if their lights weren't nine feet up at their lowest point. So that's three, three feet out. Sorry. Yeah, three feet that is just shining into our bedroom window. We can't envision our tenants not just be staring. The light not coming out be leaving their property, but they are LED lights. I have pictures. We sent in pictures today. Apparently they didn't come.
No, we have, we have them. They're just.
If you'd like to see, I have, no, they're not those.
Oh.
This is what we're talking about. I'll show you guys. I already told you, bedroom, whatever. That's a good light. You can see these? We've talked about it. My bedroom. Okay, there you go. This is just the screen, my dirty window. All right, this is, this is my house that faces the liquor store. You ever see these? I'm like totally lying to you. I'm sorry.
No.
Sorry, I'm way over here.
So this is where we're at right now with the light, okay? This is, this is standing against the fence, pushing, pointing to my house. All right, see the fence line right there?
Yeah.
And then there's a light above the fence on.
I just don't have daylight all the time. Yeah, yeah, no.
So here we go, fence line, there's the light. All right. And then this is what it looks like from the windows, dude. And I mean, you know what I mean? Exactly. We can get a complaint along with what you're talking about. That's fine. But I mean, so and that's a natural good light. I was in the R number one. Talking, talking to them, trying to get that straight away.
Yeah.
We gotta get it cut off, killed it, gone, bye, whatever. It's fine.
Yeah.
Right. But I mean, she has to suffer too with the back, yeah, with the other lights.
Yeah.
And then that's a natural good light. I mean, it's just a good giant candle.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? But honestly, I guess it was there before. They do shame on me, baby. You know, not not realizing that part. We don't have the light. I've never had to deal with this stuff before, so we don't know how to go along with it. We can get rid of that light. That's cool. But I don't know. Then we're just gonna, we'll carry on because they have a set of doors. You said that you'll follow on second thought.
Right, right, right.
You know what I mean? But that's, that's where I see. You guys have pictures of them.
Yeah, yeah. So basically what you're saying is that the six foot fence is gonna be great for privacy from from a ground level, but it's not gonna do much for.
Control, parking that my daughter's, approaching my daughter and everyone. That would be, that would be canceled. But the things that won't be is seeing both giant lights. Now, they have offered to make that side of the building darker. That's ready. It won't reflect as much. But the lights are still going to be there. So I'm proposing two things for them. We've talked about it already. Either the lights get lowered or something, add one light, or if they can do that, different lights altogether or a nine foot, ten foot fence, solid fence. Those, I have a problem with him having the liquor store there. I'd want to have a good business, you know, like, but it's, it's affecting our house when we live in it.
So when you were saying the other day, when we were talking, that that anything over six feet comes with the permits and all this other stuff, but.
Variances.
What's that?
A variance. You need a variance.
Yeah, so what what the case may be. But I mean, if everything else is on could the, if it had to be higher, could could they skip all this process to go up higher? Maybe it's just gonna be talking the same exact spot. Take this one down and put that one up just to mitigate all this nonsense. You know what I mean? You know, all the other, you know, the stuff that goes on with it.
Right. You don't want to stop. You want to go ahead and continue with the same kind of what a business can open, what it does for us negatively. It impacts us when there's people coming in and out.
Well, it it all has to do with what the by the bylaws state and things like that. So, okay, hear you. Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak on behalf of this subject?
So can I ask the electrician on that's sitting in front of us, what, after hearing their concerns, what what would your initial resolutions be?
Let me describe what what I passed out to you. The top of that sheet is a bird's eye view from, we'll be looking down on parking lot.
Yeah.
And it's looking at the top of those four fixtures. The crosshairs line is the extent of the light throw, which is somewhere, it's, it's bright to 18 feet. It minimizes to about 25 feet. They're called full cutoff wall packs. So they are specifically designed to mount on the perimeter of the building the light straight down. There is no forward facing lens. There's no light throw that goes directly out from the light. Everything is angled straight down at an angle that shows on the bottom part of that sheet.
But that's not what's there currently.
There's it. That is what goes on.
So, all right, so. Those have been installed.
These are the new lights.
So that was what we just saw the pictures of.
So let me.
Yeah, go ahead.
Continue with this, to describe these lights. So they're described as full cutoff lights. Those particular lights come in five degrees of brightness. These are the second lowest degree of brightness. They're 45 watts, 45 watts each. What was there prior were 500 watt sports lights that were taken down.
Where were those? On the side of the building? There was no lights on the road on that building.
We can't, we can't allow the back and forth.
I get it.
I've never seen those things. They work.
Just, just straight to us. We can't have, we can't have that. Yeah.
It's easier in Zoom, right? Because you only have to look at the screen. I get it. Totally get it.
The lights that were there were on the side.
Okay.
From the side.
Are we ready to discuss this? Do we have enough information? Properly.
And if I could add one more thing?
Sure.
Anytime you take a photo of a light fixture, it's gonna be bright. It's gonna be, it's gonna look in the photo a lot brighter than it does when you're at it. Okay? The other thing with these lights is they do reflect off the wall. So there's a degree of reflectance. So a dirty white wall is 30% reflectance. A clean white wall is 70%. A black wall is 0% and a pastel wall is about 30%. So one of the issues that can be addressed with the brightness of these lights is painting that wall a darker color. Dark gray. The front of the building is light gray, pastel, final siding. Side of the building can be painted, patched up and painted with a dark gray, which will greatly reduce the reflectance. Right now, it's dirty white. It gives a 30% reflectance.
So it's not just the brightness of the, it's not just the brightness of the the
The light.
actual light, it's also the reflection off of the side of the wall.
What you're seeing in those photos is the the immediately below that light where it hits the wall, that's what you're seeing. The lens.
Almost like a mirror effect where it's.
It was formed from a table sunlight. So I mean, I mean, it wasn't pitch black, but I mean, it was.
I get it.
You know, I have a lot of arguments. I just, it's just, this is, they're good. I mean, if you're great, I just wanted to just like square it like it.
Okay. All right. So my thoughts are that, my thoughts are that we're looking at now they've torn down this, we're not looking at this. They're talking issues that we can't just solve with a six foot fence. We're talking lighting issues. We're talking tenant space. My my fault is that they need to come in front of us with a site plan so that we don't have, because what if they fix a couple of things? And the next thing you know, we have complaints again and then we haven't done properly the exact thing that we should have done.
Was the site plan gonna show how they're gonna resolve the lighting? And that's, that seems like the big issue right now.
Well, remember on the site plan that we had for Flower and Soul, they showed that really cool pixel.
Well, they showed it in the pixels and all that, but you haven't seen it in real life like they're seeing it now.
Well, of course, no, of course. But I just think that, so I also think that it would be beneficial of the of the property owner because now they'll be ready and have done things how they should. And then when they have a tenant come to them, they won't be going through that process at that point. And if like a, I forget what the cannabis company, whoever ADC cannabis company or whatever tenant comes and they have to extend their parking and anything, they can have their tenant modify the site plan. And it would just clean it up so that, because like she said, we've had, they they were gonna do just siding and this and that. And we've gotten beyond that. And now we're negotiating other things to happen where I think that it would just be 100%. I don't know. That's my opinion.
Uh, yeah, I think my, I I agree with you. I think my opinion on it is that it's it's our job to protect the standard of living of the residents against, you know, basically.
They still have to have lighting, right? They still have, they're still entitled. There must be some code that says they have to have some lighting.
Right.
It can't be too dark.
Okay, so would.
Because it benefits the neighbors too if you get it just lit up and you don't have the barking guy out there and stuff.
No, I agree. But I'm saying like if they put up the six foot fence and then it's not really solving anything.
Six foot isn't gonna do anything by the way, what they're saying, because of course, you know, they're up, the lights are up nine feet and they're up high. Of course, they're gonna say you can't get around it.
We're doing like band aids instead of making sure.
You said that the building's darker. Might make a difference? I don't know.
Well, the, see, the, I'm, I'm charged to do two things with lighting, public safety and security. So I I can't leave a building dark. Now, right now, these lights are questioned and the side lights and the back lights are on a time clock. They don't go on till about eight, eight fifteen. And talking with the neighbors, we've got them shut off at nine, nine fifteen. They need to stay on when the store is open. So if the store is open till 11, and it's gonna get someone working inside. The outside lights need to stay on till 11:15 so that whoever's working can leave with some light.
For safety purposes as well, right?
So I I I can't leave a building dark while it's open. I wouldn't even like to leave that building dark when it's closed.
So what we're, I think what we're, the three of us trying to do here is is appease everybody by also saying, you know, to have you go and then paint the side of the building gray and then say, well, see you in a month and see how it goes. That's gonna be a lot of work, a lot of time, a lot of effort and money that may not need to be spent if there's a better solution to it than just painting the side. Although it might be a great solution, rather than shooting in the dark, no pun intended, that maybe, you know, we can come up with some better solution, whether it be an official site plan or to the recommendation of if even lowering the lights is possible or raising the fence is then possible, which also then includes added expenses. So it's.
More time too.
And it's more time. So.
I understand that if we get it all done at once, it would just, I think it would be actually more cost beneficial to you as well, Mr. Patel. Like to not like throw things at it and hope it's gonna work and get your site planned on and then have any. and get your site planned on and then have anybody who would come in as your tenant do their site plan work, especially if it was a cannabis place, they're going to have extensive things to go through. And that would be, that you could make it be their cost to modify the site plan and then we can make sure that we're all doing everything above board, making sure that your abutters are not, you know, that way you don't have to deal with the everyday aggravation of the whole thing. And I'm sure, you know, paying Lawrence to come here multiple times and things like that. Let's just get this done.
Well, I just don't, if that's the decision that is made to see, that that is the decision. However, I would like to know what it is specifically you want shown on the site plan that you haven't already been shown tonight?
The whole entire, everything to, everything that needs to be on a site plan.
Okay, so you have the builder, and you have the property owner.
Joe Webby knows our absolute bylaws, and so...
All I'm saying, I know that, but what else? I don't see how we're going to solve the issue of the lights, which is...
We, yeah.
Be the only remaining issue by doing a site plan.
Well, lights are, are...
How many lights do they need on for security? That's what I want to know. How many of them?
Please, please.
I know the idiot, at least the back lights on.
I really appreciate...
I'm asking you.
I know, but you need to, you need to be called on, I'm sorry, like... Just like so that we, because it's coming out of nowhere. It's like not, you know, I'm trying to, I understand. Yeah, I'm off track.
Site plan and the reason for the site plan. So to your point, that the only, the only thing that's really going to get addressed by doing a full site plan is addressing the lights, which otherwise could be addressed without a site plan, is what you're saying?
I don't see, from a practical sense, you have a plan of the building and the side of the building, which shows exactly where the lights are. I don't know what else we can show on the site plan that's going to make, that's not going to make the lights disappear.
So, ready? One sixty, one sixty-seven, twenty-eight. No permit shall be granted for any commercial, industrial, business, institutional, apartment, multi-dwelling, municipal or school building or public utility structure. And none of the above classes of structures shall be constructed or externally enlarged. And no such use shall be expanded or established in any existing building or lot not therefore used for such purposes except in conformity with a site plan bearing an endorsement of approval by the planning board. Said site plan shall show the owner of record, location, zone boundary lines, easements, or other legal restrictions. Exact location of buildings, building buildings, on the lot, west side, front, and rear dimensions. Lot dimensions, topography, adjacent public ways. Location of off-street parking, lighting, utility systems, surface drainage, traffic flow. Location and nature of open spaces with specific notations as to landscaping, locusts plan, and other details deemed necessary by the planning board. The planning board may waive or substantially reduce the site plan submission requirements for projects having limited or minor impacts consisting with the purposes of this chapter. And then it goes on to A, all the way through, um, section, there's eight, there's letters A through H with different subsections under each one.
And at our meeting on the twenty-first of May last year, you gave a very exciting...
You've added different things that have, we're not, we're...
You haven't added anything...
You added a tenant space and we're talking about lighting?
It's not, it's a proposed tenant space.
Okay.
If, if...
I really, I really honestly don't want to go back and forth. It's different than what we were at the meeting, I understand. But we're going to end up having to go down this road anyways. And we have a butters complaining and there's different changes.
I don't see...
I'm only one person on this board, but I'm going to go, I'm going to go to move. I motioned that we have them comply with one sixty-seven, twenty-eight and put a site plan in just due to, we can't, we can't just let this keep going back and forth. My thought process.
I don't know, I just... My only concern is that that motion doesn't address the specific situation that the residents are here for right now, which is lighting.
Lighting, it's right here.
No, I understand that, but what is, what happens between now and the next meeting, in the next two weeks of where they're dealing with the lights in their, in their bedroom?
We can figure that out too, but I think that we need them to come back in for, I think that we can make that decision as well, but I think that, my motion's on the table. Do I have a second?
So your motion is to have them come back at the next meeting with a full site plan that, to address, or whether it's the next...
It's just a full site plan just to address the lighting, pretty much.
No, it's fence, because they're talking about putting up a fence, and that's not...
A taller fence, you go into zoning and...
That's not suffice, so maybe they can figure out how to put in trees or something like that. But we need a full site plan. They're not just doing siding anymore. They have tenant space and a storage. I think we wouldn't be doing our job if we didn't look at this and see that we're not a hundred percent going forward on it.
And I also think that...
We're leaving out so many different things. It's not just siding anymore. And they didn't mention lights before.
We did mention lights before.
Okay.
It's, the two minutes are on my line.
But, okay, but storage, okay, so I stand corrected. Storage, but we have, we have issues with it now, so...
Okay, business, I don't want to get into it too much. Now you're hanging a hat on, it's like what I call a tenant space.
Well, you, have you been in front of the selectmen asking about a tenant?
Have I what?
Has there been something that you mentioned earlier tonight that you've been in front of the selectmen asking to get a tenant?
No.
Or somewhere, a business on your property, on the property?
I have nothing, um...
No, but it has somebody for the, for the address.
No.
That was the other park shop. That was the other park shop in front of the board of selectmen.
The one for here?
There was another, there was another...
Oh, I thought that's why you brought that up earlier tonight to say...
He was saying because that got declined, they're rethinking what that tenant might be.
But was that to go here?
No, 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 I didn't, I didn't...
That's not what you're saying? Okay.
What I said was this, let me be clear again. I know that the board of selectmen voted two to zero last Friday to not sign the HCA. Beyond that, there has been no formal discussions with anybody in the town about a site plan for anything...
But was the HCA to be at your location? That's what I'm stating, like the...
Which would then ultimately change your decision as to what that future tenant might be, knowing that the selectmen voted against that.
Not necessarily.
Okay.
Okay, let's just make...
But it still doesn't disregard the...
So, I think we're on the same page. I think if...
There are so many steps that retail landlords or has to go through in this or any other term. The first step is to sign the HCA. That then allows them to go to state to get their provisional license. Whether they decide to go ahead and discuss a term of process in the, it's only their fault. But as Charlie pointed out, so the HCA has nothing to do with the site plan, the floor plan, or any other thing.
I get you.
That they went before...
So I think what Amy is proposing to wrap all this, or to eventually get to the point where we can finally wrap this up, so that you guys and everybody else, the abutters, is perhaps a site plan to address the fencing situation as well as, which will ultimately, whether you raise the fence or drop the lights, will address the lighting situation, which we can't have, you know, residents and abutters coming to us saying specifically, this is our problem, and then say, well, you know, it is what it is, this is our opinion, so we're just not going to care about that. So you've been hearing this as the concern of the community, right? So by having a full-blown site plan put into place, and if you do bring in some kind of tenant, have them then amending it in the future. But we're not talking about that yet because it's just storage. But it doesn't solve the lighting problem, which is what everybody else here is concerned about. So if a site plan addresses lighting and fencing and knocks all of it out, which is what I believe Amy is saying, and knocks all of it out in one swoop.
So you want to see a site plan that, that it can be a straight line that can show a six-foot high fence. You can't go any higher than six feet. Matt, Matt's general love us. You couldn't anything more than six feet unless you want to go with special...
We can go back and forth with them, I mean, we can...
Yeah. So, so if we ask, if we say at the, at some time in the future that there needs to be a site plan that addresses the planning for the fence, any other type of shrubbery or fencing or tree work or landscaping, but also taking into consideration, I think you guys all know time is money. And if the lighting situation isn't fixed, they're going to keep showing up. And we're going to keep hearing them, and we're going to keep addressing it. And then at the site plan, now you've paid money to have a site plan made, and we're still not addressing it because they're still going to be pissed.
I just, I don't see how a site plan is going to address the issue of...
Because then we can make, like, for instance, Chris, do you mind if I use your, you know, like...
As an abut for Flower and Soul?
Remember how you needed certain things from them so that it would make you happy? So like trees, for instance, you were talking about with the owners. I don't think it directly went through us, but that was a technicality on the situation, but it would make other people happy. Maybe we could figure out something that could happen.
And you've got to see what's going to happen on the whole property actually, too.
Right. So at the end of the day, to your, to...
So this is to my point, yeah.
To, to wrap it all up, to answer your question, what a site plan will do will put in paper or on paper so that everybody involved in this meeting can look at this and say, does this solve the problems that have been recently addressed over the last, since May of last year? To use your point, right? Because you were saying what you were referring to, to May of twenty twenty.
These issues only came up in May of this year.
May of this year. So at the end of the day, a site plan is going to address those because you've heard that. So it's going to be the plans for what you're hearing for, for...
It's like a, yeah, like a contract of a plan that everybody is now had some, it follows the bylaws and everybody's come in here and expressed their concerns and we agree upon it, and therefore it actually protects you because here's your plan. And that's that.
Also keeping in mind, I think there's going to get to a point where we're going to fix the, you guys are going to eventually work through this lighting issue, but also know that it's not going to be completely pitch dark. And I think you guys understand that too. But, but there needs to be some kind of balance, there needs to be some kind of agreement. So I think, to Amy's point, a full-blown site plan for the property will address those issues, keeping in mind when you, when you put that site plan together, make lighting the number one issue.
The site plan is kind of in a sense, it's like a, it's like a blueprint of what you want to do before you do it.
With yours?
Right, piece of paper, I guess.
And no, it's, but it's, that's, that's your site plan.
But it's, it's what you intend on doing before you have to do it, because then you, then you try to work on what you have to be done.
It gets brought before us?
And you just talk with this...
It gets brought before us, we bring people up, we awkwardly stare at this for ten minutes in silence, right? While everybody sits there and twiddles on their phone and scrolls through Facebook. And then we ask questions, and that allows the residents to be able to come in and say, based on your questions and their answers, here are the things that we raise our issues as, as abutters. And then eventually it gets to the point where we go, happy, happy, cool, sign off, I approve. That's how that's going to work. So I think from a standpoint of, maybe from a technicality or whatever of the logistics that you're pointing out, this is the way that's probably going to be the most cost-efficient way is to get that site plan on the whole property going.
So, so, okay, so you look for a site plan for the whole property?
Yeah.
We're going to motion to have, what's the address?
I just had it in front of me too. Sixty, six fifty-seven Mont Ponce Street.
Motion to request at the next, in the nearest future, as soon as possible, hopefully by the second meeting in July, first meeting in August, a site plan for six fifty-seven Mont Ponce Street in Halifax, Massachusetts.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Eh, no, I don't see the sense in it, but anyway, you know.
The only, the only thing I'll say to that is this, that I don't know when we will know who is going into what is currently the storage space.
That can be a modification later.
Right.
So what do we do? Do we do like, like, like...
A full...
Add a tenant with...
As it sits now, as storage.
Or if you want to have a tenant in the future, get it ready for that, but we need a full-blown...
How can we do, how can we do a party there?
We need a layout, we need a site plan for what is there now that is now currently completely different than what we had in the file in nineteen ninety-eight. Miss and Alina's, this is, this is now what the planning board has voted, I'm sorry. We need a site plan by the second meeting in July or the first one in August. Sorry. But I think it really will benefit you, I do.
Specifically to address the lighting situation, which is what the people that are abutting you as your neighbors are drawing to.
I can just say that with a site plan review, a lighting designer will be involved. He's going to put these same exact lights on the side of the building. This is, that's what they're designed for.
Okay.
I don't know, I can't lower the lights because then they'll only shine out half the distance of a car. I'd need to put four more lights.
Okay, but these are all things that we'll end up having to work out on the site plan, and I...
What you're saying, it's not going to change. The site plan isn't going to change the lighting.
No.
So we're going to go through all this expense and time and still going to have, still going to have the same issue with the lights.
Where's the sign?
So let me ask you this then. So, so the answer to this is, sorry guys, you're screwed.
No, the answer, we, we will have, I think we have an answer on the fence, we're going to...
They got a site plan.
Yeah, so what, what...
I get it.
What remains then after the fence are the four lights that were put up on the side of the building for safety, which is called, and secure. And as Jim has tried to point out, these are the least of crucifix. So what I'm not saying...
There's other issues though too, we're going on. It's not just the certain things that we were going for before, it's changed. We have people complaining, we need a site plan so that it'll clear it up for you guys. But we already motioned it, so there's no, no sense on this.
You could, I need to motion again. I'm saying a site plan is not going to do anything to, in terms of dealing with the lighting.
It's in our, it's in our bylaw, one sixty, so it's... But there's other things that we're talking about now. We're talking about, I don't want to argue with you back and forth, it's all in there. We need to get a plan that makes it so that all the abutters are, and you, are in agreement because we can't, look at this, we're going back and forth now for, I don't know what time it is.
Ah, you're getting past my bedtime.
So for an hour and fifteen minutes, we've been going back and forth, and we're not going to come to a happy meeting. We need to have a plan that we can all agree on, which is part of the bylaw. And I'm sorry that we have to enforce it, but we do. I'm sorry.
Can I suggest that you three drive by?
I already have, and I will.
That's me?
Yep. I drive by.
If you can come look into my bedroom if you would like to.
Also, please keep in mind, I know it is not in the best interest of our board to decline or make it extra difficult for a business to come into town. New business is good for the town.
And, and you're still running.
And so we want to do everything we can to have a happy relationship with the business owners. However, we also have to keep in mind the best interest of the residents. And if this has been a consistent concern, then it needs to be addressed. And at the end of the day, bringing forward something on paper will allow us to at least get closer to the solution.
Yes. I agree.
I wasn't expecting you to call me. What I wasn't expecting you to call me is that problems, fences, lighting, everything. And without requiring a full site plan and rehabbing all the site plans as a, as a, when the new tenants, we don't know who's coming in.
Yep.
Since that board selectman denied that HCA...
But that doesn't have anything to do with this.
Who's coming in that tenant place, it's off right now.
Yep. Yep.
So that's what I was expecting.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that would be their thing, to, to-
We will just-
It's admitted to the site plan.
Yes.
Then they, anybody can come.
So, so I think the hard part for the, for us all to understand is that, you know, originally when we all had this, when, when the town had the discussion about the, the liquor store going in and, and rehabbing the dilapidated property, it was specifically said that that was only going to be used for storage. Now it's a potential for more, but we also, since that time, have had additional work done to your building for safety purposes, yes, but it also has to be brought to your abutters, and that's now where we stand now. So although, in your previous minutes that you've brought up, yes, that was the conversation, things have changed, which has now brought us to the point where we need to now have the site plan so that the residents can have copies of it, so you can have exactly what you want, and then we can discuss it and just say, this is, this is what needs to happen in order to move on to the next step.
Does that site plan have to be done by, uh, at the stamp of, of an engineer?
Um, I don't know if they have to have an engineered stamp, they can draw up their own plans, is that correct?
It should be stamped. Somebody's got to take responsibility for it.
Okay. I know that some people have put four things, um, that haven't been, or, or, you know, they, I don't know. I heard, I, I remember, and Mark's not here, but I remember Mark stating that it didn't have to be an engineered plan, it just had to be a plan with everything on it that, like, it didn't have to be done by an-
I mean, they could draw up themselves just like the plan they brought us, it's just a whole lot instead of just half of it. Is that what you're saying?
I mean, yeah, but, but, but I'm saying, he, he's only asking, does it have to be, but then it would have to comply and meet everything, but I, I mean, you'd probably be better off getting it done by an engineer to get it done boom, bang, and won versus, like, what if you missed? You know, but that's up to you, what you want to prevent.
Let me put it as basic as this, I can draw as-
I, I see.
As you can see. So, I have the meets and bounds in the setbacks of, of the project.
You could probably take that old site plan and just modify it, just draw what's on there now.
No, I, I, I have-
That's kind of what I was asking you, is like, can you modify the site plan that is in there?
Well, if you just take that existing site plan that shows all your lot lines and existing houses and everything, and just what's been taken off or added, just add it to the plan, I would think.
So that's why I was asking.
But to your point, somebody's got to take the responsibility for it, right?
All you're doing is just scaling off what's there now and just, all right, we took this off the building, and this was added, and this house still exists, and, you know.
There shall be submitted, ready, site plan requirements. The plan shall be submitted at the same scale, at least one inch equals 20 feet, or enlarged plots, one inch equals 40. Two, there shall be submitted at least same scale as the site plan, a surveyed plan of existing site features, including the size of the property, the topography, at two-foot contour intervals, can you do that?
We are, we already have that. Because, because Webby designed the, uh, designed the renovations, upgrade the issues of the septic system. So we have to devote-
Oh.
So you got a new site plan when he written, when he did all the septic repairs?
He's got, so we have an accurate, I mean, I showed you, you know, close to you. We have a site plan at one, uh, uh, one to 20, which is what we need. We have contours at two-thin intervals, which-
That's required.
Is all for. And all I would simply do, and Joe Webby would, because I already talked about this, he would allow me to take his engineered site plan and draw on our parking, like I showed you.
Well then, by all means, I, I, I mean, like, you know, I mean, right?
He already has an engineered plan from Joe, showing all the septic and everything, so.
We're just, so you're almost there, so it's almost like a no-brainer that this is going to be a good decision.
It didn't save a lot of time and money.
Because like I said, in, in the end, we still got the lighting problem, no matter how many-
So that's the point.
So, we can't look at it now because it needs to be, um, a, right, a site plan application, right? So, we need a-
Well, it's already, it's already been to the Board of Health, right, that site plan, right?
That's not a site plan, though.
Well, it would be with the septic on it, it would have everything on there. Wouldn't it, doesn't it have the lot lines and everything?
Well, then you're further added, so I would make an appointment, I would fill out the paperwork for a site plan application, correct? And, um, get an appointment with us, and sit in front of us, and we'll do our thing.
But understand, so that we don't waste everybody's time.
So you're just going to take that and put the fence and lighting and everything on that, is that what you're saying? Instead of, instead of paying him to come back again, do it all over again?
Exactly.
That makes sense to me.
And there's nothing in the bylaws that requires it.
But like, you know, my point is, when everything's said and done, we still got a lighting problem, and that's why we're all here.
My biggest concern, we can show the fence, show the parking, um, all the meets and bounds that factor around here, I just still don't understand what you want me to show if you haven't seen the season about the lights.
That's it, that's, that's what I can't get either.
But it's not just about the lights, it's about, it's about the fence, we, it's about the fence, I'm sorry, but it's about the fencing, and, and it's about the tenant space instead of the storage, like, just put the site plan forward. But that's what we voted, and I'm, I can't, we can't, it's almost 9:30, we have other things going on, but we already motioned this, and I said 16728, I read it out loud for you, and that's what needs to be on a site plan.
I just need to know what you want me to do in terms of the lights, what more can I show?
Do we, the plan is to come in front of everybody and get a plan so that everybody agrees upon exactly how everything's going to be, so that when a complaint-
Lights are still going to be the same.
But when a complaint comes in, it's on file on a plan that everybody agreed to, and they're going to have darkening things and this and that, and we're going to all agree to it instead of spending an hour and a half going back and forth defending.
We're going to be spending that again with the lights on the same.
There has to be, there has to be a solution to the lights.
We have to do something legally by our bylaws, 16728, we have to follow the bylaws.
So here, here's the hot part.
Well, you already voted on it, so.
It's our job to follow the by, let all, all emotions and, and opinions aside, it's our job to just follow the bylaws by the way that we can for the best interest of the town. And we've heard your, your side, and we've heard the complaints of the abutters, so-
I understand what you're saying, 100%. It's just, we're going to go through a new site plan and still have a lighting problem.
And it's not falling on deaf ears, you bring in that site plan and understanding also the fact that the, the lighting is going to be a future issue.
People come along, you do another site plan.
Okay.
It's great for the engineer.
All right, so we will, we will be-
We're all to build a model of the site.
We will, okay, so we're, we need, we need to move on to our next agenda items, I'm sorry. It's all in the best interest of everybody.
We'll work through it.
The problem that I-
I understand what you're saying.
No, I, and I understand what you're saying, too.
We're going to have that same-
It's just dragging things out and it's not resolving anything.
But no, it's getting on record so that now-
Oh, I know, I know, Amy, I, I, I agree, I agree with you, I just don't, it's just dragging it out even longer, costing them money, and it's still have a light problem.
But they already have most of it done, so if they put it in front of us, it's going to protect it in the long run, because he's paying Lawrence Gogody to be here twice already.
So here's my, that's my initial concern about this, too, and whether it's a, you know, that's plenty of what we need to have as a resident.
Oh, yeah.
Somebody brought up, so you're telling me that in this, so that he can battle an Irish accident or whatever accident it is, said, oh, just scored, right, just scored-
Maybe at the time, that's what they, what they were planning, you know, who knows?
But at the end of the day, that to be, I found that on the first-
Yeah.
Then people say, that's the first I heard, when it got, it was a miracle, to then say, no, I've never done that, or they've also applied for that, but then you're going to sit here and look me in the face and say, oh, this is a little bit, and then further down the, it's a, or a slot, which is behind the application for the cannon store to go in and a tenant spot right there, I showed you, so we have to, at the end of the, my show was this that was probably presented to, or like we're saying, that's where this is going to go, but you, you know, it's a storage, so you're going to say that, but then you're going to battle us with the lights, so it's-
It just needs to be all squared away so that we don't have problems.
It's more the fact of, of, we can't, we can't have people that have residential properties with those types of lights shining in, but at the same time.
Oh, I know, but then again, they gotta, they gotta have lighting, what are you going to do?
Right.
Right, but we can at least do something that will buffer it and take care of it, where then now it will just be agreed upon, and it would just move forward without the issues, is my thought process. You know, like, I think-
I'll probably get plenty of lights from Dell, put this building up just to be in my face. I'll probably, I'll probably shine spotlights right, well, there's one right now, there's one light in that building that lights up Martha Hall like you read about, and there, but she just lights her, it lights everything right up. See, that's all kinds of stuff that doesn't address, you know, what do they put up for a building, what's the lighting going to be? None of that's addressed. Like, you got the 2,500 yards of lawn that he hauled out of there, the grade elevation to-
But good luck, you should bring up the lighting, because-
Ah, so it's the first and third, first and third Thursday, first and third Thursday of every-
That condition was put in there so that-
The whole thing that pisses me off of them is all the work they did there, that there's no rep, no repercussion for it.
But as you can see, I wanted to protect you as far as making the-
But you know, they, they did a lot there.
So if there, if anything happens, you can take pictures and send it in.
Yeah, you know what, I'm not into that. I watched them do that whole thing for months, you know, they just, they did so much work on that property with no permits, no nothing, they just did it, they just pulled the jamb pack, they just go in and do it all, and if they get caught, oh, sorry, you know, I mean, that's what they did, that's what they do. So now they've gotten permission to put the building up, and now they're just going to go boom, whatever they want with the rest of the property, because they know there's going to be no repercussion for it. You know, they hauled, like, they hauled thousands of yards of lawn out there, no removal permits, they should be fine for that, you know, they, they totally changed the contours of the property, they, they did, it's unbelievable what they did there, you know?
I always thought that was the contour.
Huh?
I always thought that was the contour from-
No, that was, it was all woods, it was a hill.
I remember, it was woods.
It was all woods, that, when they bought that property, you couldn't even see that back, that back foundation. They had to have a tree company come in just to clear trees around so they could get around the building, then they clear cut the whole place.
Well, you could get around that, that building.
Huh?
You could get a, I, I was friends with Henry Suckles, so I was in-
Yeah, well, Henry let that place totally go, it just totally got all grown up, you know? You know, I knew Henry, he used to come up in my yard and get his arrows out that he'd blew, shooting in the backyard and stuff.
Well, because there was a, you know, there was a liquor-
Henry was a good guy, but, um, you know, old Austrian guy, but he just let, the thing is, they just did so much there that they should have got permits for, and it's like even the stormwater, that's, this is bullshit. Oh, if the water runs the street, I didn't come back and tell you about it? Oh, come on, please, you know? They, they got to contain the stormwater, that's all there is to it.
I think that you probably learned something about me that if I saw it, or I was alerted to it, or did you-
Yeah, but I mean, they should, how come, why is it that, like, the tree guy has to have stormwater, how come they have to have stormwater? I mean, do they have paving over there, does Villard have paving? The tree guy that was here earlier, him here, is this paved? But he still has to have drainage retention? How come Dell doesn't?
Can we get order?
That's all.
All right. In 9:30, coordinator is returning. Um, who we got left now? Discussion? Walmart, 295 Plymouth Street, see everybody get a copy of that letter?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, about the hours.
So what were the conditions on the original, um, were you here during those time periods when Walmart was coming in and had the, the, um, timing?
Their, their hours restricted to seven, to-
Well, they just want to open an hour early, is that what they want?
Yeah. Did it have something to do with abutters?
There is, there is, um, a restriction on their hours, I wasn't on the board when they did it, but-
See, when they, during COVID, they were opening early for seniors, remember that?
And that's what they were talking about, doing this.
And now they just want to do it all the time.
For the seniors.
So what would be the-
They got them used to it.
Huh?
They got them used to it.
Yeah.
What would be the process on that? Is that just something that we would be able to do? Would we, in my opinion, need to make sure that all the, um, abutters were known, um, are made known so that they can make any comments? What are your thoughts?
I think we need to look and find out what's in the file on what the restrictions are now.
Okay.
So I would say, let's go to the next meeting, in the meantime, we'll investigate this to have it, um, on our next meeting.
Okay. I agree. Anybody else?
I agree.
Okay. Franklin Street, Street Solar Array Asbilt Sign, I was in there the other day, I didn't see it, I was signing the, um-
What's all there has to be signed?
The Flower and Soul, did you go in and do that? Yeah.
I did all the signing over there, I mean, this is the Franklin Street, just their Asbilt, right?
Yep. I didn't see it in there.
Was he here for Walmart?
I don't know. I don't know who that is.
Well, must be, there's your answer.
Um, so we just need to do that still, is that basically what this is?
Would you sign the Asbilt?
Joanne, do we have the Asbilt for, um, the Solar Array in the office?
No, I don't think we need you to get it, I think we would just mean it, like, to sign it.
If it's in there, we can stop there and sign it, right?
You are ready?
No, I said, if it's in the office, we can just stop and sign it.
Okay. Thank you.
Asher Lane, I have reached out to John Paquette, I left him a message, I didn't hear anything back.
I have the book with me.
You want to take a look at that? Rick, did you get a book?
I don't, I haven't, I've never seen that one. I haven't seen that book, no, the one that she has, I don't have that.
Oh, that's an old one.
That's an old one?
Yeah. But did you get a book with all the, um, bylaws in it?
Yeah.
Okay.
You haven't yet?
No.
Okay. The Town Clerk will give you a sort of guide, so you can maybe-
So we're looking in 235, should be the back section.
Probably tell you why I didn't get one from the Town Clerk.
What is it now?
It comes under section 235, or chapter 235. Subdivisional land.
Yeah, I don't have it in this one, it must be, it's in my other book I didn't bring.
Um-
Not in the very back of it?
Huh?
It's not in the very back of that?
No, I don't have the whole thing here. I don't know why.
So one-
I changed, I changed the folder and, uh-
Is the last page-
It must be in the other one.
Is the last page 16775?
No, it's 16415.
Oh.
No, wait a minute. No, wait a minute. Yeah, 16417. I'm missing, I guess I didn't get it in here. Oh.
So we were looking at changing 235, 6C for making 14 days, 21, so, right?
Mm-hmm.
And then.
To bring me up to speed, what would the, what would the benefit be for that? Just curious.
Just give me a longer.
Give you a better.
Instead of 14, you had 21 days.
So that's on an A and R, right? So, right?
Yeah, just gives you more time. It's just, is that what?
The state is.
The state is, that's what the state is, so we just.
The state used to be the 14, then they changed, we didn't.
Right, so we're just going, getting in line with the state?
Is there any downside to it?
If we didn't act within that time period, then it would be an auto, right? An auto, right?
Yes.
So we need a little more time, just in case like.
More time.
Right.
You know, we didn't meet in that time period.
So there's all.
I don't see any downfall, I don't see any disadvantage to it.
No.
Does it just need a motion?
No.
Or do we not motion?
Why is it?
It's just discussion.
Yes.
Why is it hearing?
So when we change a bylaw, we need to have a hearing for the public. So like, right now, we're discussing, and then we would have a hearing.
For, put it on the agenda.
Yeah.
Answer that.
But subdivision control goes into things like economic impact. Have you read it before?
Obviously not.
It's a fun fact.
A fun fact?
Yeah, it's fun. Like, you have to, for instance, Economic Report, which is 235 EA, is availability of town water and how much new additional water volume will be required by the proposed subdivision. Is there adequate main capacity to provide the projected added water and things like that are all considered?
Got it.
Things like that.
But the discussion is just to say to take that from 14 years to 21 days?
Yeah, but that's.
But that's what it all entails.
This is subdivision control in general, yeah.
I will come in tomorrow and.
I'd also like to take a look at 235, 21 Streets, Section. 21 C. 4. Which? And that is, "The property lines at the street intersection shall be rounded with a street line radius of not less than 30 feet." And I'd like to add in there tangent to the street lines.
Mm-hmm. So that was 235, 21, Section C?
235, 21, C 4.
C 4. Yeah, I just don't, I'm not what I do. Let's go to 30 feet?
Yeah, it says, "The property lines at the street intersection shall be rounded with a street line radius of not less than 30 feet."
Mm-hmm.
And then add in tangent to the street lines.
Oh, oh. He's on C. C 4.
Thank you.
It's all right, the new guy.
Thank you. So you, where would tangent go?
At the end of that?
At the end of the, like, would so feet would end up being a comma, and then it would say tangent?
Um, of not less than 30 feet, tangent to the street lines.
So tangent to the street line would be added?
Street lines, yeah.
And the benefit of this is?
It just clarifies it.
Oh, okay. Tangent to the street.
I mean, all the others, all the other towns have it, it's just that.
So it's like a secretarial thing?
Yeah.
Okay.
And at some point, we might wanna take a look at the plates that we have for the street layouts, and maybe make some changes to those. I mean, our lines, they call for the granite curving, but then we don't do any granite curving and bound. Now, the only thing we do is granite behind the basins.
Right, just to throw stones?
So it's like, you know, if, if we don't do that, then we should have a, a plate, which is the layout of the road section, showing without that, showing the Cape Cod burn.
Right.
Did we ever have that in the past, where they made our streets originally with Cape Cod burns, or?
It's just the way that, when they adopted it, they adopted everything with the granite curving, but then they.
Did they adopt that around the time of Brandeis Circle, or?
No, it would've been, um.
Cause that was the first street in that area that came with sidewalks and granite curving? Well, I don't know if it's.
Doesn't have granite curving.
Sidewalks. Oh, yeah, you're right. It doesn't. Sorry, it's been a while.
I don't think there's any street other than like 106 or 36, the state is put in, it's put.
Right, all the states, state roads.
Oh.
But that's for security for the sidewalks.
Okay, oh, okay.
Cause if you don't have the granite, then you need to be back further.
So.
In order to fit the road, the wider road, and sidewalks, you put the granite in, then you can bring the sidewalk up against the road.
Oh.
Cause you have that protection of the CAS going off the sidewalk.
Yeah, cool. So we don't have that, oh, curving or edging?
I don't think we have the plates in here.
Pre-cas concrete edging? Good meeting. So are we gonna look at dates for August or July for a hearing? Or do you wanna continue this to the next meeting, or?
What do you guys think? I mean, it shouldn't be a very long hearing.
Get it out of the way, knock it off the list, right?
The two changes.
One month out?
Yeah, probably go, maybe the second.
Second week in July?
Second meeting in July. Sound good?
Mm-hmm.
That'll give us time to get the advertisement.
Just so that we're all aware, on our agenda, it states date in August for hearing. Does that matter?
It what?
On our agenda, it says changes to A and R timeframe, date in August for hearing.
Is that what we said before?
I guess, and it's in the agenda, so maybe we should do the first meeting in August, just to be.
Consistent?
Yeah.
That's funny.
Okay. So, um.
What was the date, August what?
It doesn't say a date on it, but.
For the first.
Are we doing the first or the second?
We do the second and third Wednesdays, so.
No, first and third, but.
Yeah, first and third.
I'm saying, are we doing the first or the second meeting in August for this hearing?
First.
Do the first, it would be the August 3rd. Uh, no.
5th. August 5th.
August 5th.
Okay, so we'll put a hearing for bylaw changes on August 5th? Do you wanna start off the meeting with it? Or put it at 7:30, or?
Yeah, we can do 7:05.
I'll be here.
So do we need to motion a hearing, or?
No, we don't need to motion, we just can schedule that.
Okay. All right, and then next on our list is Zero Mon Ponset Street.
So August, August 5th, we're gonna schedule the hearing for the subdivision and.
Yeah, at 7:05.
7:05.
Yeah, and we'll make sure that you have, or both of the bylaws that were proposed changes.
And we had Zero Mon Ponset Street, there was an email that came in from the zoning officer today, did everybody see it?
I haven't had a chance to read it.
I was just saying, I'm probably better off going to my email for that than I am.
Is it in here or is it an email?
It's some authority.
Is it in, in our folder too?
Well, if you just told me that.
Okay.
Sorry. So I'm gonna read these into record. All right. Or do you want me to, that's what I would propose to do. Okay, so a memo from the Planning Board went to the Zoning Enforcement Officer, Robert Piterelli, put together by Joanne Snow on June 8th, 2021, re Zero Mon Ponset Street, which is due to the 60-day extension for site plan review. At our meeting, Planning Board, on January, I'm sorry, June 3rd, 2021, the Planning Board read and discussed. Your memo, so I guess that means Rob's memo, dated June 1st, 2021, that informed the Planning Board that you approved trustee Ms. Monty's May 27th, 2021 request for an additional 60-day extension to apply for a site plan review with the Halifax Planning Board for the location of Zero Mon Ponset Street. The Board is requesting an answer from the Halifax Zoning Enforcement Officer to their following question. Where does authority come from to allow someone to operate without a site plan? Thank you, Joanne Snow. On June 16th, we got a reply from the Office of the Building Commissioner to the members of the Halifax Planning Board. On June 8th, 2021, this office received a memo from the Halifax Planning Board concerning Zero Mon Ponset Street. The question inquired by the Board was, where does the authority come from to allow someone to operate without a site plan? One, because the Board referenced trustee Ms. Monty and gave an address of Zero Mon Ponset Street, am I to assume the property in question is Assessors Map 95 Lot 9? Two, in my opinion, the question the Board is posing is ambiguous, and I will try to answer accordingly. I will respond to the Board's question to the best of my ability. I believe the Board received a copy of a letter from this office dated April 1st, 2021, referencing the use located at Assessors Map 95, Assessors Map 95 Lot 9. In respect to that letter, the Board will see a determination was made by this office that it is that, quote, "It is necessary for you," parentheses, the party in question, and parentheses, "to apply for a site plan review with the Planning Board." So accurate boundaries, information, and determinations can be made by this office to determine zoning compliance, end quote. If, at this time, the Board disagrees with this determination, that states it is necessary for the party in question to apply for a site plan review with the Planning Board, then the Board can take the appropriate action they deem necessary. Thank you. Robert Piterelli, Building Inspector, Zoning Enforcement Officer, CC, Board of Selectmen, Zoning Board of Appeals, and Board of Health.
So I believe what we talked about was it wasn't necessarily just what gives you the authority to operate without a site plan, but what gives you the, the authority to give us another 60-day extension on top of the original 60-day extension to continue operating a business in town without further providing any kind of source of, of what's going on? Right, so the question is ambiguous, is a little bit demeaning to the, to the information that we're looking for. Don't you think?
I would agree.
You know what I mean? It's like, we can get real unambiguous if you want, and just say, you gave an extra extension to somebody that you didn't have the authority to do so. Why?
Exactly.
Right?
I would agree.
I mean, am I wrong?
Well, that's basically, what I, like I said, I'm just reading this letter for the first time right now, and because the Board referenced trustee Ms. Monty and gave an address of Zero Mon Ponset Street, am I to assume the property is in question? Well, we were referencing what he did, so I'm sure that we didn't need to have that question asked either.
Right. So is it my understanding that it is necessary for the party, for the party in question to apply for the site plan review with the Planning Board, then the planning, then the Board can take appropriate action they seem, they deem necessary? So that's basically saying, do whatever you want? Or whatever we see, whatever we see fit for within the bylaws of what?
That, that's how I would take it.
So does that mean? They don't have an approved site plan? They were requested to have one. Upon not providing one, they were granted an extension by somebody who doesn't seem to care, one way or another, about the actual rules and regulations. So now we've been given permission to deem whatever we see fit? Or to act in however we see fit for the process, which would be what, a cease and desist? Or a notice to the owner of the business and to the property to say, you have until X date to provide us with a site plan for official review?
Or request that the zoning officer issue a cease and desist if they're operating without the site plan?
I would seem to say that both would be concurrent, just as we just did to Mon Ponset Street, the liquor store. I think that they need to give us a site plan, and I think we should send the trustee owners a letter stating that we need a site plan by the first meeting in August, and I would state that they need to have a cease and desist. I would put a memo back to the zoning enforcement for a cease and desist.
But cease and desist now, or in August, when, if they don't come back with a review?
Because it's the second 60 days that, where, what?
Well, he gave another 60 days, but you're saying no. No, we were saying no, right?
No, they've already been operating underneath, within that second 60 day.
Well, they've gone past the first 60 days, and he told them they could have another 60?
Yeah. Without, without providing a site plan, and he just did it. And then when we asked why, he basically wrote, "The question is stupid."
He didn't answer the question, in my opinion, cause, well, if he did, he's stating that he didn't have authority, cause we're now being able to operate on 16728, and maybe that's why he didn't answer what authority he has to.
At the same time, I'm not sure it totally makes sense to take it out on the specific business owner because of the lack of understanding or following a regulation of said person. So I think to Rick's point, is it, do we need to do a cease and desist now, or can we rather say, you have till this time, and if not, then?
I mean, you know, what's, what's the, what's their?
I mean, who, who does a cease and desist? Do we go down there and say, hey, you guys closed the gate? What do you do? You know?
I mean, enforcement goes through.
It has to be, it has to be the zoning enforcement officer.
Yeah, we don't do enforcement.
They're not, they're not unseasoned.
Got it. It's not their first writing?
No.
What do you think is fair? What do you, I mean, what's the letter of the law say? I mean.
I mean, I don't understand why, if you determine they need a site plan, why you would say, well, continue until you can maybe get one?
Yeah. Well, if bylaws say that you have 60, 60 days.
The bylaw says that you have to have the site plan before you operate.
And so they were given 60 days, and then, for some reason, without any correspondence with anybody, they were granted an extra 60 days.
But nowhere, nowhere does it say that you can grant 60 days to start with.
So.
So basically saying, you need a site plan, but you don't have to go to the Planning Board to get a site plan, I'll let you operate.
But then also, what I think this communication is, which is probably more important, is the communication was to specifically ask that officer who, who permitted that extra, not only the original 60 days, but the extra 60 days, when asking that person, we got back, your question is ambiguous, not gonna answer it, do whatever you see fit. That, that's the response? You want my opinion? Sorry. You knew the rule, you had it in writing, you've had it writing more than once. Cease and desist, send us the site plan, as it says in our bylaw that is needed. Follow the letter of the law, cause we can't hold one person to the fire, like you just said, to Mon Ponset Street and the liquor store, and let these people get by just because he knows he's buddy buddy, or whatever the case may be, to get a granted 120-day operational get out of jail free card. I don't, I don't see it, but that's just my, maybe things have been different if the answer, if the answer to the question was approached differently. But I guess not everybody plays nice in the sandbags.
Yeah, I mean, I'd just say that I already read 16728 today, and it says, "No permit shall be granted for any commercial, industrial business, institutional apartment, multi-dwelling, municipal, or school building, or public utility structure, and none of the above classes of structures shall be constructed." I mean, it goes on and on and on without a site plan. Period, end of story.
Thoughts? Is what it is. Giving them opportunity, what can they say? You know, giving them opportunity, what can they say? You know? They have, you know, they haven't come to any meetings or anything, or haven't sent their lawyer or anybody, so-
Actually, their lawyer did send us a letter, their lawyer did send us a letter in February when this first was brought up, when we didn't know what it was.
But I mean, like, like you said, Rick, you know, they didn't come to us, they didn't send something in, say, we need extension, or?
I know, I know, what, so, you know, they had the opportunity, so.
Okay.
And we, we have the correspondence written down in paper now, so if they do come to us and say, well, we didn't know, you say, well, somebody spoke on your behalf, we requested it, and somebody came out and spoke on your behalf, so maybe you should take it up with them, but this is the letter of the law. This is what is written in the Halifax bylaws that every business owner needs to abide by, so it's our job to enforce that. So cease and desist, get the site plan, bring it back, and we would love to approve it, assuming it lines up with everything, but until then, you know, play by the same rules everybody else has to hold, you know, abide by.
Is that your motion?
I motion that we issue a cease and desist for Zero Mon Ponset, that's the address, correct?
It's map 95 lot 9.
Map 95 lot 9, based on the fact that they've been given extensions that were not warranted, and have not provided us with a site plan, and that they are made notified that they are to provide us with a site plan to be approved in order to continue their, their business.
Okay, so we can't give the cease and desist, so can we amend that a little to say that we, um-
Request the zoning enforcement officer to do a cease and desist. That's all you can, all we can do, we, we can't cease and desist.
Right, right, so whatever the channels of it is to be, so I would, I would amend my-
What we can do is we can send this to the attorney to make sure that we get the thing written right.
So my motion would be amended to line up with the proper protocol in order to follow the channels to be able to request a cease and desist, based upon the fact that they've been given ample time and opportunity to provide us with a site plan and have not, and request that they offer or bring a site plan to the planning board for approval to continue business operations in the town.
I'll second.
Okay, so there's a motion, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 unanimous.
Past my bedtime.
I was gonna say.
Minutes?
Minutes. On minutes, we really need to catch up, because this is over three meetings ago now. And-
Everybody get a chance to read?
Two months ago, two months and two days. Yep, I was okay with it.
Pardon?
I was okay, I'll motion to approve the meeting minutes for April 15th, 2021.
I'll second it.
I don't think Brendan was here at that point.
Nope.
So, this motion seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Joanne, do we have a copy of these to sign?
Please, sir.
Minutes.
Halifax dash finance committee dash zoning bylaw review, page 40. Apparently, we have, it says, hi folks, Mark Babrowski, Browski of Blatman Babrowski and Haverty LLC, will be meeting with the finance committee on June 21st, time but no earlier than 6:00 PM, and venue to be determined to begin the zoning bylaw review project. The members of the zoning board of appeals, the planning board, and the board of selectmen, along with the building inspector are invited to attend. I expect that the attorney Babrowski will sometime next week provide a memo concerning the project, and that document will be sent along to the interested parties. Please pass this information along to the members of your boards. Questions on this? We also had an outline, I believe it might have been in my email, do I have it here too? Yeah, oh, here it is, of different notes that this Babrowski made on our bylaws, and I thought that when we voted on this, that we were going to have an overall meeting of, in a bylaw committee of residents to do this, and that definitely seems not to have occurred. Yeah, was this actually put into a newspaper to alert the town residents of this? Or maybe put on a Facebook page, like other things have been? Has it been, has it been properly notified to the town, the people that these laws affect? Charlie?
So the question is, is that this topic specifically was supposed to be brought, or at least made aware of, the townspeople so that they can come and speak on behalf of how they feel about this?
Yeah, actually, there was supposed to be a bylaw committee put together by the residents of the town of Halifax to go over all the bylaws, not just go right to an attorney.
And that didn't happen?
Nope. I believe Public Records was found not to have anybody on the bylaw committee about two months ago, and there was nobody on it, maybe a month and a half.
So, prepare those next, next steps?
So I guess the 21st of June is when there'll be a meeting with an attorney somehow we hired. But I guess he's off duty, so he won't answer.
Doesn't say what time either, does it?
What'd you say?
I said, it doesn't say what time either.
I have to go back to it?
So the town bylaws, zoning bylaws-
Time to be determined sometime.
Are going to be addressed and changed legally by a attorney? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, there's some notes here.
Yeah, I see.
And then they're gonna have, but, but there was supposed to be a bylaw committee so that the townspeople would have some say in part of what's going to occur to the bylaws.
And so if that's the due process, and due process wasn't followed, then what is the next step to make sure that the due process does, is followed?
I guess, being at June 21st, time but no earlier than, time is not put there, but no earlier than 6:00 PM, and the venue is not determined yet, and it's Thursday.
To show up sometime at some place.
And it's open meeting law needs to be posted already, so I would state that, did you, is this posted? I guess we'll have to find that out. But if it's not posted for Monday night, then I would state that that's not a legal open meeting. I'll have to check, I'll look on my phone.
Well, is anybody gonna plan on being there? Because if they're going to, then we need to post the planning board meeting.
I'm okay.
Wait, what'd you say?
If there's three of us gonna be there on Monday night, we need to post the planning board meeting.
I, I will be there.
I can't make it Monday night.
I was gonna say, I don't think I'll be there. So, oh, because it'll, because it'll be at least three of them?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. No, I don't think I'll be there.
I'm, I'm looking at our calendar right now.
I can't, I mean, my last client meeting's at 6:00, so I would be, would be here till at least 7:30. Or wherever said meeting happens to be. Back parking lot tonight, I don't have my GPS.
Okay, and then everybody saw the zoning country club estates would be July 21st?
So there's a municipal school building meeting, there's a Holmes Public Library meeting, there's a board of selectmen meeting, and a conservation commission meeting, but there is no mention of a meeting for June 21st.
Amy, did you have the other-
Oh, wait a minute, sorry, wrong date, finance committee, my bad.
Amy, do you have the other white paper in there? The bigger?
Yeah.
It came, no, it came from this hole.
Ah, I'll give you one, mine.
Is that my?
Oh, no, oh, no, wait, that one. Budgets, acceptance of minutes, reserve funds, transfers, and line items transfers, interview with Todd Dargie, discussion with Mark Babrowski on zoning bylaw revisions, and then corresponded. So it's sometime at the finance committee after 6 o'clock on Monday night. I wonder why zoning bylaw revisions are in front of the finance committee and not the planning board?
Who would have that answer?
Wouldn't that technically be the way it would go?
What's that?
It's at the finance committee that they're discussing the bylaw revision.
The finance committee meeting?
Yeah. Is that how it usually would go?
I guess they're the ones that are running it. I don't think so.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Huh? No, I put them all back.
I'll second your motion.
I'll assert it.
And it's seconded.
Aye.
Aye.